Okay, let's get right into this little... David, I'm gonna have you take it off. And Amy and Valerie, do you wanna just chime in as we go with each article?
So, we have an article, a warrant of seventeen articles, probably one or two of them will be withdrawn. The first article is the planned budget adjustment for the fiscal year 2019 omnibus budget. We have the amounts that were voted at the annual town meeting, then we have, we're still working on the amounts that we need to adjust us to. We're missing the free cash figure, so we still don't have that information.
What was our schedule?
Schedule was that it was supposed to be submitted for certification on the thirty-first.
Okay.
So, we're right on that cusp.
Thirty-first of what?
August.
Today's September fifth.
Yeah.
We're on the cusp.
That's not a cusp, that's a week.
Okay.
A week and a cusp, but not the same thing.
I think we have to...
So, do we know?
Treasurer is out of the office right now, two treasurer's out of the office.
Okay.
For free cash, doesn't she have the assessor?
Well, they, my understanding, last time we spoke, is that he had everything he needed from the treasurer and the collector this year. There have been some delays in the past, but that our staff didn't meet the requirements.
Yeah.
So, do you, I mean, do you know what the...
I don't know what the hangup may be, and I don't have a figure for you, so.
Definitely don't wanna figure if you don't have a figure. No guesses, but I'm just...
So, hopefully, we will have that for next week, we have another meeting next week, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll have those numbers then.
So, the only one that's on the money is the school, they're firm with that?
Well, no, they're actually, they're not. I had a conversation with Ann McKenzie this afternoon.
Well, let's go, let's go through this, 'cause there are some things on there for them, so we'll continue.
All right, so Article One is still a work in progress, and I'll present you the information of what he's looking for at your next meeting. Article Two is a revolving fund. The Park and Rec Commission are interested in acquiring the after-school program formerly known as Hadley Kids Incorporated, and they would like to take over those functions and pay for that out of the revolving fund. So, this would add to our list of revolving funds for after-school programs formerly handled by Hadley Kids Incorporated. The annual expenses would be about fifty thousand dollars, and this is a startup here, so we're being conservative with that number. And the amount that can roll over from one year to the next would be ten thousand dollars. So, this has no impact upon the tax rate, and it would be in keeping with the Park and Rec Commission's presentation to the board without a month or two back about taking over Hadley Kids Incorporated.
Do we wanna do any recommendations this evening? If we're all in favor of that, would you like to do that for Sydney?
Sure.
Can I just ask a question, a quick question? So, didn't, we had a revolving fund for Park and Rec previously, right?
Yes, we did.
So, is this the same fund expanded, or is this strictly isolated? It looks like it's only for the after-school program.
Right, so this would be only for the after-school program.
I think it was specific for, when we discussed it.
Yeah. When they came that evening, it was just gonna be a revolving account for the after-school program?
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure, 'cause in the past, they're, so, so, my second question, that if it is just for the after-school program, previously, we had instituted a revolving fund process for their other programmers, and what's happening to that programming, if it's not included in here?
That programming would be handled by the revolving fund that's already set up, and it has a twenty thousand dollar kind of carryover from one year to the next.
Oh, this is, okay, now I've got it. This is a completely separate article.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of the annual town meeting where we already voted on...
This is separate.
Okay.
All right. So, as we get into it, there would be an opportunity for us to revisit these two revolving funds and see if we can't combine them, but we'd have to at least establish the after-school program as a revolving fund to get the first year running.
Okay. So, sorry, you said you, I'll make a motion to approve Article Two.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous will be fine. Here we are, the select board, and you people will bring it up with your next...
Yeah, we don't have enough.
Yeah, so, we'll wait for your recommendation at the next one. We're just clearing our table right now as we go along if we can.
Perfect, it helps us too.
And Park and Rec Trust on Article Three.
Article Three, so this would be to take the balance of the gift by Hadley Kids, and waiting for a final figure for that, it would be a substantial sum of money to set up a trust for the purpose of Park and Rec creation programs. So, that would be a source of funding in the future for Park and Rec. So, this is a, right, for right now, just transferring money, the balance from Hadley Kids Incorporated to a new trust, which would be administered by Park and Rec.
So, when you say a substantial sum of money, are we talking five thousand or a hundred thousand?
Talking somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand.
And what does a trust mean, as opposed to like a stabilization fund, or something along those lines?
Well, the trust would be a legal pot of money that would have certain parameters about...
How it's used?
How it's used, the monies that go in or...
Well, that's what I'm...
No, but, I mean, it says right here, their annual expenses are around fifty thousand right now, so it's just transferring the initial amount into that fund.
We're going down to the third article, John.
Yeah.
We're on the third article, the second one we just voted on.
Okay.
But why, but why wouldn't the money here be the seed money for revolving funds?
Well, I think it's gonna work the same as the second article, pretty much.
No, I don't think so.
No. Had, Hadley Kids Inc. is different. It's a totally different entity.
I have no issue with them using, using money for other programming, but, but are we, in Article Two?
Article Two would be paid, that money comes from fees paid by participants, that's a revenue.
Okay, so the town's not seeding any money into Article Two, that just comes from their billings.
That's right.
And so, the parents pay the tuition, or whatever, for Hadley Kids Inc., and it gets deposited here.
Correct.
And all the expenses for that program, so it's all contained.
So, the assets of Hadley Inc.
Go into the trust.
Would go into that trust.
And do we have any language on the trust, I mean?
Yeah.
I know that Linda was working on that, so I don't have that language right now.
Do you wanna hold on that one to vote?
Yeah, just so we have more information. I mean, I'm not, not opposed to it, I just...
Yeah, I was just kinda wondering, is it something where they could take all the money out at once and buy a big something, or is it something where they can only use it ten thousand a year?
A lot of those trust things have to be with the approval of the select board anyway.
That's why I'm asking, I mean, and it should have provisions to, you know...
Anybody that draws on their revolving accounts has to go through the select board, even though they're set up for a certain department.
For the trust, I don't think all of them work that way.
Isn't that true?
Both are...
The woodchuck does, but not...
Woodchuck, but then you've got a bunch of cemetery ones.
Right, and they don't require approval, do they?
No, they don't. There are certain balances that you can't touch, certain balances which are expendable income, can be used as a funding source. In order, George Edwards' trust is like that, takes a tummy, the vote would spend.
So, I guess we would have to see what the trust...
I mean, that George Edwards fund, anywhere, anyway, I think Park and Rec was using someone at one point.
They did at one point, yeah.
Yeah.
Just we wouldn't want them to be drawing that for operating, or something like that.
Right, right.
So, we'll wait to see what the language is. Article Four.
Article Four, this is a housekeeping article, so every year, every town meeting, we look at as opportunities to go to old articles that have balances left, and then we can't use them for other purposes. So, we, in the first block, you'll see that we're returning money back to the funding source from which that money came from. So, if you look at the top of the list, there's balance of three thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. That's left over from when we did the town hall parking lot. That funding came from the capital stabilization accounts, so we'd be putting it back into capital stabilization. And the bottom of the block, you'll see the substantial amount going from the library electrical project, which the Community Preservation Act voted to request that this be returned. So, eighty-five thousand dollars would go back in the Community Preservation Act.
Okay.
There's two rate studies, water wet rate study, sewer rate study, there was a late bill that came in on both of them, so rather than six thousand dollars each, it's six thousand minus thirteen hundred.
For both, or for mine?
Yeah, it was a twenty-six hundred dollar bill.
Are the library trustees aware of the electrical?
Yes.
And they're okay with it?
And some change, John?
They're okay with it, I'm not okay with it. I think that returning a substantial amount of money back to CPA for a project, which if, given how things may go on the eleventh, we may need that money to upgrade the library structure. So, I asked them to defer this to the annual town meeting, but they insist so.
But if it's not using, well...
They've, you know, they've said that they would work with us on this one, so I'm okay returning the eighty-five thousand.
What, you're saying, why don't, that is kind of a...
All depends on what works.
And I don't, we don't want to vote tonight.
Yeah. All depends on what we're gonna use that building for.
Right.
How much money we wanna soak into, just make it... Okay.
All right, so the bottom block is borrowing authorizations. Here, we're not returning money, we're just reducing the original borrowing authorization in order to clean up the books. So, you can see for the fire truck pumper, we had a borrow of seven hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We don't need all of that borrowing authorization, so we're asking to amend it to seven hundred sixty-one thousand twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, and that will tidy up the chart of accounts.
So, what would, what was actually spent?
Seventy-one thousand twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Seven six...
Seven sixty...
Seven...
Whatever that number is.
Yeah, whatever, whatever this number right here is.
Okay. Okay. All right. Do we wanna take any action on any of this, or we're gonna wait till we have more on the electrical library?
I say let's wait till after the planning board meeting next week and see where we're at.
Sure.
Or wait. How about planning as committee, you have anything you wanna add on this article, number four? Does anything look amiss to you?
It looks okay to me. I, I am a little familiar with the CPA one, 'cause I was there with that one. I know that they received, I did mention, because I talked to David Pryor, that maybe we wanted to wait on that, because we didn't know exactly what was gonna happen, but the chair had already received a letter from the library trustees saying that they didn't want anymore. So...
We'll help group them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Or, well, perhaps. Let's just ask. Okay. Back to Article Five.
Article Five, this is something that we've talked about when we have the emergency work done on the sewer line at Route Nine. This will transfer from sewer impact fees, eighty thousand dollars, to the sewer reserves. And I'll clean up that language, but the purpose is to provide additional money in the reserves that we will need in order to get through FY nineteen. Marv, you may have something more to say about that.
Well, that basically sums it up. It was unexpected money to be spent, and then as we went through the study, went through the models and everything, basically, this eighty thousand needs to be transferred back into reserves to stay on our schedule somewhat of the model. And then recently, some of that, so.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have one more question. Just where does that put our sewer impact fees fund? With that balance, approximately?
After the approved, I can get you the exact figure, but I think we're somewhere, a little over, just over a hundred thousand, something thereabouts.
So, how much should we give back at the end of June thirtieth? Out of last year's budget?
Out of the operating?
Yeah. Close to balance.
I don't have the exact figure, but we're down around twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I understand.
What I'm saying, for approval, what I'm saying. Capital Six, that's kind of left up in the air with free cash can't transfer.
Yep, and Seven is the capital article. Capital Committee is working to come up with recommended funding package.
Looks like the only thing on there is...
I just put that in for the illustration.
Okay.
And we're waiting in the free cash, too, for that, so.
So, you're meeting on Monday.
For that, yeah.
And number Eight, reserve for CPA Cemetery.
All right, so there are three CPA articles here. The first two relate to the sewer, not sewer, the cemetery. Sorry, cemetery, been a long day for you.
Yes.
So, the first one is for twenty-three thousand from the historic preservation set aside for the Hadley Cemetery Committee to preserve a historic, historic gravestones of Hockenham Cemetery with the two, two-year sunset provision on the article. So, CPA has about one point seven million dollars in here, so they have plenty of capacity to absorb a twenty-three thousand dollar project.
And it was a unanimous decision that night, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, they presented very well, they had a, they had a great plan.
In memory of Fred Oakley, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this twenty-three thousand.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second article's for twelve thousand dollars from the same preservation set aside for the Hadley Cemetery to conduct a study of possible restoration, conservation in the cemeteries of Hadley. Again, with two-year sunset provision on this article. It was unanimously approved by the CPA Committee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
But why do you have to have a study?
Well, they did the, the first one where the Hockenham, that was, they had already done that study. They knew exactly what they needed.
Okay.
And so, they had the plan all set.
Okay.
This is for all the other cemeteries, they don't have a plan.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I may need some help with this one. The next one is for the North Hadley Congregational Church, twenty-six thousand dollars for additional restoration, conservation work for the steeple and roof area of the church.
What did we give them the last time?
We gave them about fifty thousand, a little bit more than fifty thousand dollars of CPA money, I think it's fifty-four thousand.
Was it that much? I was saying...
It was fifty-two, maybe.
So, what's left to be done with it?
So, when they went up to the steeple and they were doing the work, they found a lot of problems from water damage in the roof. So, there was a lot of questions about this, but they felt that if, and if they don't do the work, they're gonna, you know, a lot of the church is gonna be, you know, they have to preserve the whole church so it stays up. So, it's the roof. The church is going to put ten thousand dollars into it, so the project is a, it's a thirty-six thousand dollar project. So, the church has the ten, and this will be twenty-six in the town.
And can you refresh my memory, the one vote against it was, was that because CPA feel that they should get more money for the project, or was there a specific reason?
I don't think he had a specific reason. I just felt like he thinks that there was, you know, it's a, because it's, and it's touchy, too, with the church. They're a little nervous about it, but they, they said, okay, it's for the outside of the building.
Yeah.
But they were saying, well, is it maintenance? And most of us said, well, we don't think it's maintenance, because if you don't restore this building, it's gonna fall over. So, we called it restoration, but this particular member called it maintenance.
Okay.
So, he said no.
So, this runs into the act and the decision by the State Judicial Supreme Court. That decision said that we would have problems giving money to religious organizations, but they said so in such a way as to make it completely unclear to cities and towns as to how to proceed on this, so.
On the last town meeting, there seemed to be a good amount of support for giving the money. There was, you know, the discussion about religious organizations with town money, but I think the historic factors won out the argument as well.
I think the church itself is listed in the Register of Historic Places.
And the court, when we gave the money the last time, they had to put a deed restriction on it. That was part of the deal, was the deed restriction.
Yeah, I remember the master, or whoever that was, that spoke was very accommodating in that.
So, this was just unforeseen things. It's something that when you pull it apart, just like you see on TV, when you pull it apart, you find out, oh, this needs to be done, and this needs to be done.
As we called it years ago, it was a Pandora box, the money pit. So, I mean, I think, you know, we can approve it for whatever it's worth, but it's really gonna be the voters that will decide on this, I'm sure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's okay, Liam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The one I'm voting for is, we don't have too many historical places left, and we're knocking Booker School down, and, you know, they seem to be disappearing quite quickly. Their famous North Hadley Hall isn't gonna look like it does right now.
I could make it if it gets struck again one more time. Don't get your hopes up. Oh, well, it's a thought, anyway, sorry about that. Article Ten, pending application for CPA land, and that would be...
It's eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah.
There's an opportunity to, for the town to exercise its right of first refusal on Chapter sixty-one A land, and that is going back to the CPA for action on the seventeenth.
Potentially, I think Park and Rec is, well, and, yeah, so there's a lot of confusion understandably about it, 'cause again, it was kind of something that came with the eleventh hour. But just for purposes of clarity, the way that the request is being worded is for land acquisition. That is in accordance with the open space identified needs within the master plan, and then specifically access to the Connecticut River. A lot of people are understandably jumping ahead and talking about, you know, building structures down there, you know, having a... That's, that's not the discussion right now, it's purely land acquisition.
It hasn't even come before us for sixty-one A.
Exactly.
So, that needs to come before us as a select board, whether or not we will...
Yeah.
Right.
Want to approve by yourself.
By fault, I mean, I don't think we're gonna be at that article at that point, where this article is right now, anyway.
So, anyway, just letting you know some of what the status is of that, so it was being reworded specifically to make it clear that it was land acquisition for purposes of conservation, CPA.
Would that maybe come in next week? Would it come in next week?
I think so.
To rewrite?
Yeah, I've actually got a draft of it in front of me from somebody, but, yeah.
Okay. All right, stay tuned for that one.
Article Twelve, okay, so this does two things. It establishes that cemeteries are now under the control of the Department of Public Works, where it's not clear that they are, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but you already do a poll about it in the cemeteries right now, so this clarifies the lines of communication and responsibility between the Hadley Cemetery Commission and the Department of Public Works by, A, giving the public work, Department of Public Works primary responsibility for the operation, management, and care of the town's cemeteries, and to amend the original vote going all the way back to nineteen twenty-eight, whereby the Cemetery Committee of five members was created and given certain powers and duties, and those powers and duties would be amended to authorize the committee to advise and assist the DPW in the operation, management, and care of the town's cemeteries.
I have a question on this. Didn't we do not too long ago, I thought they had the same thing where they revolving account, where the monies that come in for that pay for maintenance?
Mm-hmm, right, so revolving accounts handle the interment for, for the cemeteries. We do have a cemetery budget which covers groundkeeping.
So, that would shift into the DPW department.
So, we'll see an adjustment in the next budget?
Shouldn't be an adjustment, it should be the same amount.
But it would go under a different...
Yeah, it's already within the division, within the budget, having to do with public works. It's just making more explicit that it's the DPW that's managing the cemeteries.
Okay.
Yeah, I've worked a little bit, quite a lot with Alan, Mr. Alan White, worked on a lot of work on this in the committee. They've done a great job. So, I think we had discussions in the past, this is gonna land, this is kind of where we've been discussing in the past, the DPW, do the heavy lifting, taking care of the heavy lifting and stuff like that. The committee will still be on board, will be together, and they'll be handling the historical things, and the history and stuff like that, so just a quick overview of what we've been working on.
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I understand.
Four to zero?
Four.
Four to one.
All right, so now Article Thirteen would be the sidewalk snow and ice general bylaw. We have a general bylaw governing sidewalks covered by snow and ice, but that bylaw is old and does uncover all the angles that we needed to do. This is an issue that was generated by the Mass DOT installing sidewalks from South Maple Street all the way to the Emirates Boarder, with the understanding that they will not be handling the maintenance of those sidewalks during the wintertime. That's their standard policy, expressed my concern that this is...
Who's understanding? We had them in here six times and told them we didn't wanna maintain them. There's telephone poles and fire hydrants and guardrails in the middle of the sidewalks. The state does that stupid stuff, and they should maintain it.
And you're angry with us, why?
I'm not angry with you, I'm making a point to the state. I wanna make my voice heard, 'cause I've been listening to...
We're mad at them, too.
Well, then get them in here, like I said before, and let them do something about it.
Of course, they can take care of the roads that they're supposed to take care of, and remind sidewalks.
Where'd you go over there?
All right, so, anyway, we wanted to rewrite this and make the business owners responsible for clearing their sidewalks. If they want the business of people that live at Green Leaves and places down there that walk to the malls and have it accessible to them, then they should be responsible. So, they clear the snow out of their parking lots, they can certainly clear the snow out of the sidewalks that are in front of their establishments. So, that was the real reason of bringing this up, and I had mentioned it to Marv that there was a bylaw, I mentioned it to David, and I think that they should be responsible for doing that. And as it comes around, well, it seems like people that have sidewalks in front of their houses should be responsible for it also.
No.
Let me get finished here now. There are people that don't mow the lawns in front of there. There are a few there on Middle Street and West Street that don't feel the need to mow the lawns, that they don't feel are their responsibility. Well, you know, so be it, but it's still, I... Well, you know, so be it, but it's still, I know that we've been doing it, we have set a precedent on West Street and Middle Street, and I know this has been a bone of contention with you, John, is that we do have a lot of elderly people that do live on Middle Street and East Street. So we could make an amendment to the bylaw to exclude Middle Street and West Street as we have taken care of it, but I think...
I'd like to see residential still maintained by the town and business or industrial sections maintained by the property.
Yeah, it's like a town center to keep being maintained by the town.
Yes, yes.
Because there are a lot of people that have disabilities that live at Golden Court that use the bus for transportation. If the town doesn't maintain those sidewalks, what are those people going to do?
I got several calls just in the last two days, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to you about this, but residential owners under Route 9 that are very concerned, especially elderly owners, about icy snowbanks thrown up there by the snowplows that they're saying, there's no way we can shovel through this stuff, so...
Well, and you know that every time that you, we even plow it...
Right.
And take care of it, then the state highway comes through and they're throwing snow back on it again. So there have to be some limitations in not being able to find these people that cannot take care of the Route 9 area, but I think businesses have to be responsible.
I agree. I think the businesses are already paying other people to, you know, they're not out there shoveling by hand like the elderly aren't, maybe, so...
They've got a service under Clay.
So...
So are they a commercial district? Is that what, commercial district will be responsible for their locks?
Our commercial district is commercial residential, we have our places, so...
Because we're going to have the same deal when they redo this other part of Route 9.
I know Amherst maintains all of theirs still, but Northampton does not.
Yeah.
How far do you, DPW, plow when they're going up? Do you go to Spruce Hill?
Yes. Spruce Hill and back.
Spruce Hill and back.
Yeah, check Cooley's on one side of that sidewalk.
Up until the, to the end of where Mary lives? Or just in front of the, in front of Cooley's?
Just in front of Cooley's old automotive shop.
Okay, and then it ends?
Yeah.
So the reason this was brought up, right, is because of the cost and the burden on the DPW, and the fact that you were surprised when you came to Hadley that we were doing this, because it honestly isn't that typical in other municipalities. So, I mean, I'm, commercial properties to me are a no-brainer, but I'm wondering if we should, I mean, I understand that some of the owners are elderly, but then...
I'd like to see what Northampton still does, too.
They do, they find you.
They find you.
No, 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 but some they maintain and some they don't. And they plow the bike path, so figure that one. They won't maintain the sidewalks in front of an elderly house, but they'll plow the bike path.
But a lot of, a lot of these folks are getting their driveways plowed, so, I mean, if you're, if you're able to clear your driveway, you're probably able to clear your sidewalk. If you're hiring somebody to clear your driveway, you should be able to add, do an add-on to have them clear the sidewalk as well. So what I'm wondering is, I know that maybe we should put a moratorium, so to speak, or not institute the residential side of it, but I'd like it brought back up again and put people on notice that you've got two years to figure it out or something, because again, this is a service that we're providing.
Well, and I'm all for putting it out there and letting the voters decide at the town meeting, whether...
And a lot, a lot of these properties on Route 9 or Middle Street and West Street are student, students, inevitable.
But that's the thing, that commercial residential...
They're not always just the people that live there that are actual, you know, town residents. They are people that are more or less transient and going to school and things like that. So I think it would be for us a thing to look at to make sure that the owners are responsible for making sure their sidewalks are cleared.
Can we be responsible for all the town buildings?
Correct.
Because we're, we still have to take care of that.
The library, you know...
All the way down to Hopkins on Route 9, Russell School, you know, so on and so forth.
So I think it's something that we should probably leave on and let the voters go from there, and if we have to revise it...
I'd like to research a little bit more, see what other towns are doing.
And maybe have put some dollars and cents to it, too, Marlo, if you have kind of like a per, per storm, you know, estimated number of hours it takes for the DPW, what that might cost.
Is it just a skit steer you plow it with? So you already have that piece of equipment?
Yeah, we have a mini lower than that.
Okay, that's what you use? So it's already a piece of equipment we own for other purposes? It's not a special plow or anything along those lines?
But we still have all the town buildings and the Route 9 property that we...
Yeah.
Our, our property is附on on there, too, so...
When, I know you've got a whole lot of downtime right now, so...
Right now, what's it roughly, four or five hours?
Do you think you...
Four to five hours, then we have to go back out another four or five hours and they decide to wing it 12 hours later. You get nowhere when you call over there.
Once they wing it, you can't go through with the sidewalk construction anyway.
And you've got to put a big order up there and you do damage, so...
Could you maybe check with Northampton and just see if they've had any liability issues? You know, where the town has, people have come after the town when an individual didn't adhere to the...
I mean, I've got a lot of background from my previous community on that.
I was a kid growing up over there.
No, and you, you said it, right. I mean, once the state comes through and rolls over four feet of ice, how do you expect an elderly person to clean their sidewalk that's showing two passes to get to current?
But that's what I'm saying, I'm wondering how many people are actually shoveling their own sidewalk on Route 9, or whether they're hiring...
A lot of them are.
Yeah.
Even where there's not sidewalks and we plow their driveways and we get some special signs swung at us.
That's true, I guess you would know.
Yeah, I've been there.
I've been there.
Take their mailbox on top of it, you're really in big trouble, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
The structure they built around the mailbox to protect it.
Yeah. All right, so we'll leave it on for now and have more discussion before October meeting?
Please.
You know, one other little tidbit I want to throw out is over the years, we've taken on quite a few more roads, looking at the history here. Same a lot of people, same crew. So that extends clearing the roads, which is number one priority first, and then getting on our municipal lots and school lots, and then sidewalks last. So the more subdivisions we take on as accepted roads, takes longer for us to finish them up, re-treat them if they need to be treated. So it keeps extending the sidewalk clearing out further and further to the point where we're almost not meeting the lot beginning with an iron end either, the 24-hour thing. So I just wanted to throw that out, looking at this whole thing, as this evolves and there's other subdivisions coming on, potential more roads to be added to the department to maintain. It's a domino effect on the other end of the storm, and the guys run many more hours to the top of it.
David White, we're reminded we can do for future meetings revisit the issue of non-conforming, non-accepted roads and the town plowing those.
I think we have, I think we did for...
I think we did it all. I think we're just...
I have it up against...
Yeah. Is there still some left or not?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, well, there's quite a few, there's, well, I need to make some adjustments in the plowing, too, because there's some that potentially could be being done that we shouldn't be doing.
And there's some new developments, too, so we should take, just take a quick look at it before we start.
I was wondering, since it's a big concern about the elderly having to be out there, is there a way for them to come, I mean, because that's a small minority of the people, right?
Apply for relief.
Apply for a relief type of thing, yeah, absolutely. Just like they get relief for taxes, is there, you know, maybe the ones that get relief for taxes would automatically get the relief for this, too?
Yeah, I'd rather consider something like that than just make it a blanket.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a really difficult time, I think, throughout the time, and I think DPW, and Mike, you can attest to that, to people even shoveling around their hydrants in the wintertime, and not everybody does that, and it's really quite a detriment to, you know, if your house catches on fire, well, you're going to be a, you know, what kind of creep, so... Again, we've asked people over and over on Facebook and everything if they would clear their fire hydrants, and it's not always done, and, you know, it's going to be hard for us to enforce this bylaw with just shoveling sidewalks when we can't get the hydrants done. So it's something that I would like to see more enforced, but it's hard.
And then the other problem is you've got people cleaning their fire hydrants, and they're cleaning the fire hydrants off, not cleaning around them. So that's another costly issue to the DPW. And how many, how many times are you, do we have that? Three or four a year, anyway?
Not too, I wouldn't say too many times, more people sliding off the road and taking...
No, no.
We've got plenty of them.
A resident, a resident plowing the snow and plowing out their fire hydrant and cleaning fire hydrant, if there's three or four a year.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen any since I've been here, maybe in the past, but...
I mean, they're knocking the fire hydrants down?
Yeah, I don't see that.
Okay, so the last articles, 14, 15, 16, are, and 17 are planning board articles. 14 is use of marijuana bylaw. I haven't really commented on that.
Right, I don't know the results of last night's planning board meeting, so they were going to either adopt zoning bylaws for adult use marijuana, or they were going to recommend that we extend the moratorium. Our moratorium lasts until November 30th of this year, and we would have to extend it to June or July of next year in order to catch the next town meeting.
Two hours away from here.
Yeah, as soon as I, I've got a call in to Jim Maxymowski on this one.
Does that take the same majority, the moratorium, as the new bylaw?
Well, I'm a little confused on this, because the attorney general said that you don't need a town meeting vote to extend the moratorium, and I've never heard of that. So I'd need some legal guidance on that one. My concern, my concern is, in fact, I'll be meeting with people tomorrow morning, we've seen incidents where people are using adult marijuana, charging a fee for that, sort of like as a private party, but the public invited and social media is used, so we're already seeing activity in Hadley where adult use marijuana is involved. So I'll be meeting with them about zoning compliance, so...
Where does the state with their bylaws?
That's still on hold, too?
No, they finished their bylaws.
I thought they finished.
Did they finish?
They finished their bylaws.
They're in vogue now.
Everything legal isn't, in fact, the testing facility, I think they finally approved.
Oh, okay. Just to be clear for people that are watching, though, you're talking more along the lines of adult use marijuana, that's basically in a, but in a commercial setting that's happening that we are not licensing at this point, so that's where it is addressing.
We might not be licensing any facilities, but not having any laws, bylaws, puts us at risk for other things.
Right.
There's no law against doing certain things then in town.
Well, yeah, what I'm saying is, what David's referring to is there's some commercial activities with adult use marijuana happening possibly in town now, that's what he's working on, not, not, not stopping individual recreational adult use marijuana, so, yeah.
Right, so we're supposed to be getting 3% of whatever the sales are, that's obviously not happening, there's obviously problems with the IRS and that kind of a situation. I mean, it gets, gets very sticky very quickly.
I just wanted to be clear for people that are watching that we're not trying to shut down individual...
No, no.
Use by state laws, more of a...
That's why we don't need a moratorium, we need to pass some kind of law and start collecting the money.
Yeah, and there's outlines for the laws already out there that we just have to adopt. I don't think we have to be perfect right off the bat, but adopt something rather than nothing.
Exactly.
Yeah, in other news, the Board of Health has adopted or has finished their work on the health regulations concerning adult use marijuana.
Okay.
That's under legal review, and they should be taking a public hearing in the next week or so in order to make those formally adopted. So the Board of Health is working very well in putting this together in collaboration with the Hadley Police Department so that they're involved.
At some point, are we going to get a copy of that to look over?
I hope so.
Because we can probably adopt some of what they got there, you know? I'm sure Planning Board will be able to use that information also.
I think as soon as it comes back from legal, we'll have a chance to look at it. And the last one was the roofs reserved for planning board. So there was planned to be a change in the roof in the center district overlay.
Yeah, the only thing is, the only change there is that the current bylaw specifies you should have a shingle-like appearance to the roof, and this modification takes away any kind of architectural appearance language that has to conform to certain pitch and slope, but how it looks is up to the town.
This allows for standing scenes to be used.
It would allow for standing scenes.
Does the planning board have to have a hearing on this before?
Yes, they do.
It can be adopted? Do they have that scheduled?
They have, they have to have that.
Oh, they have to have it.
On the 17th. 18th, 18th.
It's for the 18th right now?
Yeah.
It's scheduled?
I talked to Jim Maxymowski, and their intention was to schedule things, but I don't know what happened in last night's meeting, so...
I don't know, it would also be the same if there was going to be any discussion on changing the parking requirements, that would also be subject to a public hearing.
Yeah.
That's the last one on the agenda, so reserved for planning board parking.
Right.
See for municipal projects if they exempt from parking.
Right, they've, they've been cleared that they're not intending to really work on that. If someone wanted to present it to them, they'd consider it, but they're the only ones who can schedule a public hearing on it, right? So we need, we would need them to help us with that if that were to be presented at town meeting.
So right now, I propose that municipal parking would be exempt from the, from the requirements for parking interventions. That may be too blunt of an instrument for the town, but given the lack of time to work on this, I have a good point.
Right, I'm in there.
But based on our timeline here, we're going to get it out to the wire as far as getting this on the board for this town meeting.
Okay, that kind of wraps it up for this evening on that. Do the finance committee have anything they want to offer this evening?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Just, you need a new member?
Yes, please.
We need another new member for finance committee, so anybody out there with an interest in serving on the finance committee would be greatly appreciated. Terry Ushko has resigned.
Kathy Zatarca is the remaining member.
Is Kathy, so I was wondering, is Kathy still active, or...
I haven't, I haven't talked to her, so...
So how many do you need?
Two.
Two, we need two people for finance committee, please.
Two people, possibly.
Because Gabriel is...
Is off to school.
Is off to school, and Terry Ushko.
And Terry resigned, okay.
Yes.
Can you tell everybody when you meet and how often you meet, so if they're interested?
It's open, so right now, because we haven't really, we haven't been able to meet because we haven't been able to get it for them. So we were meeting at one point, the first and the third Thursday of the month, but it's, that's, at the time, that was good for the five people. So we're very open to when we meet. We like to meet at least once a month, sometimes twice a month, or, you know, and then there's the tri-board meetings. So it depends, obviously, we meet quite often right before budget, there's quite a few meetings before the, when we're planning the budget, but during the summer, it's quiet.
What is the busiest time, like month, like, what?
Oh, so I'd say, what is it, March, March, April?
Yeah. This isn't too bad with just the special town meeting, so...
No, no.
No, but you need to get somebody in here now to see what's going on.
I mean, so right now, I mean, we're going to need to get the, we definitely need to get the articles voted on, and I haven't been able to pull together a form at this point.
Is there anything I can do to help pull together that, or?
And Brian's, oh...
So it's just, it's the two of us right now, I haven't been able to get ahold of Kathy. So if you end up talking to her, I try, but...
You have the contact info or anything?
I do.
Okay.
But maybe she's going to make, I'm not sure.
And Brian's aware?
Yeah.
Well, got that. All right, thank you. That ends our tri-board meeting, and we'll go into our consent agenda. We have minutes from June 6, 2018, warrants AP 1859, AP 1908, AP 1908 dash S, AP 1909, AP 1909 dash S, PR 1907, and PR 1908. oh nine dash S, PR nineteen oh seven, and PR nineteen oh eight. We have an appointment of David J. Phil, senior, to the Master Building Committee, determination of consent veterans services agreement, and that's with KP Law, so that's, I have that here for us to sign. We have a one-day liquor license, top of the campus football games, McGork Stadium, nine twenty-two, Performance Center Commonwealth Club tent. The fire chief and the police are aware of it, they have not signed off on it yet, but they have no problem with it. We have approval of Woodchuck Fund Transfer of Funds for Zaturka Park, and that entails, they ran into a little bit of a snafu out there with the stump dump, which I think we all knew was out there, I know my son played on it with Little League, and I'm sure you did too, David.
Yep.
There are many children that put their hole into a hole.
So what, what might have been the nature of what they ran into?
Uh, they just, there were just holes that cropped up in the outfield when they were out there catching.
Oh, no, I, I have no worry.
Oh.
My kids played there too, there.
The problem was that they found a stump dump where they didn't expect to find a stump dump.
We thought, we thought the whole thing was a stump dump.
No, it was supposed to be, well, apparently, apparently there were stumps there than they expected. So they dug down and were surprised because they didn't expect to find them.
Or is that about Pandora's box?
Yeah, that was a woody one.
So that's for a thousand dollars, and that's co-administered by the American Rec. Commission and the Slough Board.
And that money is being taken from the World Check Fund.
Right.
An MOU with the town of Hadley and the Hadley Public Works employees, we now have an agreement with them. So, any, anyone want to make a motion?
I'm gonna, I was gonna say I'll make a motion to approve, but I'd like to pull out the municipal building credit. Second.
Or just abstain from it.
Yeah, either one.
Phil, abstain?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, abstain from the DPW contract.
Aye.
Aye, except for the municipal building credit.
Okay.
Aye, except for DPW contract.
All right, thank you.
Can I make a request?
Sure.
Mr. Nixon and the Chair, it just sparked my, my thought process when I was looking at the determination for the consent and then KP Law. Can we put our legal service contract on the agenda this fall?
When does that expire?
It's often ended.
It's often ended, it's often ended. I mean, in the past, we've had them come in and talk about the services they provide, I don't know, well, I think we should just talk about it and then decide. If we could do that another night, I appreciate that.
Or the twenty-second.
Usually don't have a lot of money going on.
Okay. Can't do the public hearing until seven thirty, so I guess we'll move on. David, you'll get a chance to do your administrator report tonight.
So, I guess the biggest thing is our discussion with Berkshire Gas Company this morning.
You gonna open up the lines?
No.
Wishful thinking, the sun's been down the line.
Yeah, so, so as everybody knows, that we've had a gas moratorium that was, been imposed for about two years now, and there was some, so some possibility of that that gas moratorium would be lifted. The first possibility was the building of a new line, which we all know where that went, which was nowhere. There was exploration of two different capital improvements by Berkshire Gas Company, one of which was a parallel line to serve the main trunk, and the other one was to expand the LNG facility to be able to mechanically inject gas into the lines. Berkshire Gas Company has made the determination that both of those projects are cost prohibitive, and that at this point they remain hopeful, but have no specific ideas as to how to add gas capacity to the lines. And so the moratorium, rather than being something that we could expect to see lifted with effort in the next few years, it's going to continue indefinitely. This obviously has a profound influence on our economic development for the region. There are eight communities that are affected, from Greenfield and Monaco down to Amherst, Hadley, and Hatfield. There are other communities that are serviced by other gas companies that either have a gas moratorium in place, or they're beginning to reach that capacity where a moratorium would be necessary. So this is a larger-than-Berkshire Gas Company issue, larger-than-the-region issue. So that is disappointing news, it's going to be an advertisement taken out in the Daily Hampshire Gazette.
Was there any, did you ask the question or find out if there was any reason why they're not letting the existing customers that have vacant properties connect to the gas, you know, like, a portion of the mall went abandoned, and they now have a portion of the mall back instated, and they can't use the gas?
They said that if they have a quota for the mall, let's say, so if one, say, three store, I don't know how to put this, but if they have a quota for that, so if one store closes and another one opens near there, that one gets the gas, but if that store that closes reopens with another business, then there's a chance that quota is already filled for the entire property.
And the mall's already repurposed all of the BTUs that were allocated?
Well, not just that, I mean, individual businesses too, you know?
Yeah.
Because we have ran into that a couple of times already, and I don't have to ask the fire chief, because I already know that, that the, the problem with propane bottles and natural gas, which two both do go into the same building at the same time, creates a major problem, major headache for fire service, doesn't it, Chief?
Well, they, they.
Do we have any in town now?
Yeah, but there's a whole new process now, so the code was changed to a lot of dual fuel. So there's a whole process that the company has to get permission from the gas company, from the fire chief, for the plumbing inspection before it can happen. And there's substantial labeling requirements that really clarifies that it's dual fuel on-site, where shut-offs are propane versus natural gas.
So the bottom line, the punchline was, they have two possible solutions that will be in the newspaper article, or the advertisement, or whatever you want to call it. Both of them at a minimum are hundred-million-dollar capital investments, and they don't have enough customer base to even come close to funding that, so they have a major economic issue. So, I mean, the takeaway was, unless they get relief from elsewhere, and there is no elsewhere, even the parent company, that would be a throwaway. I mean, they're, they're not adding customers, they're just trying to sustain a small base, so. And they, the state didn't even know that there was a moratorium.
Right.
But anyway, they did, but then not the person they talked to, so the bottom line is we need to resolve ourself and make sure our residents and our businesses understand that there's no light shining, shining armor arriving, we'd been saying, two thousand twenty, we thought we'd ever leave, we're not going to have any. So, on to other energy sources, whatever those might be. Okay, next.
The good news is that Hadley produces more renewable energy than any other town in the county, so there are no slackers in terms of energy production, we can continue with investing.
But it doesn't give them gas for cooking, no matter how much other, you know, it doesn't help the restaurants out, so, you know?
Right.
You know, we have a lot of electricity and all of that stuff, but the bottom line is, it's, you know, you can't, need gas in some, some restaurants, so that's why they have to go the propane.
Right, so that's something we talked about, it's very hard to take a pizza with electricity. You need something a little bit more.
Anyway.
Dave, we should send that, so just going to me, the handout they gave us, we should send that to the Planning Board?
Yep.
So that they, because they're probably saying to people, maybe, you know, so they know.
Sounds good. They weren't there for me.
No.
So in other news, MS4 stormwater permit, we just signed the notice of intent, and we sent that off, that fulfills our obligations for fiscal year for complying with the new five-year permit. When we start developing the FY twenty budget, we'll have to take into account a whole bunch of operational, operational demands that are going to cost us money, there's no two ways about it. We have raised the money for this project already, but it's going to be a lot of effort, and it's going to be something that we'll have to dig in on first. I had a conversation with EverSource, having to do with the pedestrian crossing on Route Nine in front of the courthouse. Still having a problem hooking the grid up to the project, and so I expressed my concern that we've, we have more pedestrians now, the students have returned, schools are in session, and that we need to get this project up and going.
Did you want to interject here, David, that Route Nine crosswalk thing, it's not basically on the agenda, but I know you wanted to talk about it tonight?
Yeah. I guess it was the spring we voted on putting back up the flashing lights on Route Nine in addition to the new Hawk system, but Marlowe, you want to talk about what you heard from the state as far as we're going to put it up and they're going to tear it back down, not put it back up again when they redo Route Nine?
Yeah, I think we discussed this at an earlier board meeting, of potentially moving the one near the Legion this way, maybe on this side of the lights closer to the school. The problem we have down through that whole north side tree belt is you have orange gas running down through the tree belt, there's nowhere to put it. And also going east of the lights here also is a problem. So I went back to, in the process of filing a permit to put these things in, replace the existing one in front of the superintendent's office and the westbound one, I received an email back from Baolang at Mass DOT stating that that's fine, you can put it there, you can put that in the permit, but he informed me that as part of the plan, when they expand Route Nine out here, they're going to remove it and stack it. In other words, they're going to remove it, return it to our yard, and not allow it to go back in there by the Legion, so. I thought it was appropriate to bring it back to the board's attention, to help make me a decision on where to go with this, we're in the process of procuring it. We can put the one in down by the superintendent's office, but we're coming up at this point kind of a blank on the one coming westbound.
And that was, what, thirteen thousand?
For two, yeah.
The board needs to send a letter to the state and tell them we want it there, we've already approved it, and we have good reason to, the police chief had praise for it, but I believe the fire chief was here that night, we had that discussion, and the citizens want them there.
Well, that's fine if we can get it there, I just don't want to spend the money on it if they're going to tear it down.
Well, we need to write a letter and to the state and tell them they will be putting it back there.
I'll respect the draft, I'll just.
You know.
Are you the chairman still?
I mean.
I meant to ask you that, anyway.
I'm just making a comment.
But, I mean, that's fine, John, I completely understand how you feel and what you're talking about, but unfortunately, it's the state's property, they say it's coming out and they don't want to put it back in, this is why we're having the discussion, because that's basically, I've been going around and around with this particular subject more than once, trying to get, get this item to be a mainstay, and it sounds to me it's not going to be a mainstay, so.
So we can proceed with that one by the superintendent's office, right, and that's not going to be torn down, is that correct?
Yes, because that section of Route Nine's been already done. I would have to remove the sign that they put in front of the old one, take the actual signage off and put it on the flashing light.
Sure.
You can't have a school zone that's not at twenty mile an hour, because it doesn't fit the requirements with the distance of the crosswalks from the school, and that was part of his answer to me via email when we were discussing both of them. I can proceed with the one, it changes, one at a time changes the procurement also, so.
Does it have to go on the Legion zone, or could we put it near the Goodwin? That's town property that we could permanently have it on?
If you put it on the backside of the walk, it's going to, it's off too far off the road for it to.
Don't make a urn out of the sidewalk.
The other thing that I'd be really nervous about is light and sign pollution, if you put a flashing light right next to the red, green, and yellow light out here, it's going to cause confusion.
They just hung a beam all the way across four lanes, we can't put a little five-foot extension out on that?
Well, I think, I think we need to draft a letter and.
We need to get it to the state from the board.
And talk to them, and, you know.
I would put them both in and tell them they're going to relocate it.
It's been existing for, how many years now?
I'm okay with sending them a letter and demanding that from them, but I just don't want to spend seven grand or six grand in the meantime if they say no to that.
Exactly. Let's, let's get a, a letter off to them ASAP and see where they are with that, and say we want one.
And that, would that just go to our District Two office?
Yeah, District Two, I have contact information and everything for David.
I, when I go.
I mean, my, my other question is, do we want to proceed with the one? Pull a permit for the one down there, get it done, get it installed, because like I said, the procurement changes, it drops you a little the threshold, three quotes, I believe. When you do one, if we're looking at one at for six or seven thousand dollars.
I'm fine with that.
The procurement changes.
Yeah, I mean, the police chief was, I think, was in favor of it, and this board was, so I say we go.
And, and please don't take me wrong, I'm not opposed to these things, I'm just trying to present the information as I'm running into these brick walls.
You're on your safety net.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll do that then. All right, next.
So if you're, if you're just doing one for six or seven thousand dollars, you're below the ten thousand dollar threshold, we don't need to go through the procurement because he's best business sense to.
We can just look on, we just look online, you don't even have to talk to anybody.
Yeah.
So we can move, move that one anyways, we got to disassemble the other one.
As I say, the power company takes the power out of here for me.
Yeah, yeah, we already did that. The, the other thing too is the existing base there, we may be able to use the same hole for the simple reason is that now bases that are required by code are larger square, they may go, you know, in other words, make the hole a little bigger, we could drop it right in there in the same spot. I got to take another look at that, but I, I mean, that'll be a fairly easy one to take care of.
Okay, Route Nine widening?
Route Nine widening, the update there is that Marlowe submitted a grant for seven hundred thousand dollars for Mass Works in order to, to the sewer line work there, so we prioritize that as the number one project to receive legislative support, so we'll see how it goes. The fire substation, we've moved from phase one environmental review to phase two because of the presence of, historical presence of tobacco on that, on that land, committee is working and designs are being developed at this point. Senior Center and Library updates, we'll have more discussion later in tonight's meeting, but we have a Planning Board meeting coming up on September eleventh, that's an important meeting to attend.
How about the fire substation meeting?
We did, we're meeting again next Monday night, we moved ahead with.
We're going to be pushing that back, we're pushing the public meeting and our next meeting.
Back further, okay, so nothing next Monday?
As of right now, most likely not.
Okay, so we just talked about, so the plans with our, our Building Committee that night, and?
We had, we had a follow-up meeting on a couple of things, but yeah, it's moving forward.
We'll, we'll move forward, so I'm just waiting for the typography to get done.
Is Zaturka Park, we talked briefly about that, that project is underway, we expect it to be completed in October. We took care of the exploratory for the thousand-dollar transfer from the Woodchuck Nominee Trust. DBW Fire Alarm System, that project is substantially complete, and the fire alarm, alarm system, the Town Hall Fire. the town hall fire alarm system is going on right now, we'll keep the town hall open during the installation work. North Hadley Village Hall sale, we have a walkthrough scheduled for Friday at ten AM, that walkthrough starts here in town hall with a review of documents, then we'll take anybody onto to the site.
Do you have anybody expressing interest in that at this point?
At this point, I haven't heard anything concrete, we did send out as much as information to as many local commercial real estate brokers as we could. Have you heard anything?
We had two requests for the documents, and they were from.
Advertising?
Yeah, they were Project Dog is what the construction equivalent is, they take your RFPs and then broadcast them out there, so nobody locally, but two companies did take it and send it out. That's, that's been the only movement on it.
All right, so we just got a draft unidirectional water flushing plan, which is under internal review, this is something that we will schedule for spring two thousand nineteen. We have a special town meeting coming up on the eighteenth of October. Osha and I will be receiving training tomorrow with the small town administrators of Massachusetts, and I'll be bringing that information back, that's something we need to comply with by February first, two thousand nineteen. Elementary school HVAC project, we had a very nice article on the Daily Hampshire Gazette about that, I don't think the Gazette did enough justice in giving credit to Superintendent Anne McKenzie and business manager Chris DeJardin, both of whom did a lot of heavy lifting to get that HVAC project up and going by the first day of school. We have a DPW director search that, you know, sorry to see you go, and we'll talk about that on your agenda tonight. And just going through this, we have the American Legion chicken to go on September sixteenth, fire association barbecue on September twenty first, public forum, special town meeting on October eleventh, and then the special town meeting itself on October eighteenth. Just touching on the highlights, if anybody has any questions or comments, happy to talk about them.
September twenty-third, twenty-second. Friday?
It's a Friday?
Wants to change.
That's what's on the sign.
That's what's on the sign.
So you know what my question's gonna be, did we get a check yet for the levy?
No, we did not, Bob, we got a query from the insurance company asking for more information, we got two queries from the insurance company asking for more information.
A little bit of progress.
And we have responded to both those queries.
Okay. Okay, we, still early for the public hearing, we'll jump to DPW Director Serge Janiri. And we're in the process of doing that, their DPW job announcement, we made that announcement at last, our last select board meeting. And again, we're very sorry to see Marlo go, but understand some things have their priorities and you have to do what you have to do, so I hope we can find somebody that can build his shoes. So we have posted it in several different areas.
And what is? Some of those corrections that?
Those should be, should have been made by now, yes.
Okay.
If not, let me know.
Well, the position announcement doesn't have some of the things that.
The other sites did.
The salary range and.
Right, right.
So those, that's been corrected?
Should be, at this point, yeah, we contacted them and told them to make those changes, so I'll double check that tomorrow morning.
So what's the salary range we're using?
There was a, um, one of these sites had a salary range which was requiring field, but I just took Marlo's salary and used that as the range.
But I think as a board, though, are we aiming for?
Yeah, we were discussing.
Yeah. So, I mean, what's our, kind of our, our targets, so people that are applying know what they're getting into or not getting into.
Depends on the credentials and qualifications, it should be like everybody else.
Yeah, but it's still.
Yeah, zero one range, I mean, so do we say eighty to a hundred, do we say, you know, seventy-five to twenty-five, and it's pretty broad range, so, I mean, so what were we?
You gonna have an interview committee again, or?
Yeah, that was the thing that we were gonna talk about tonight, is to set up a interview committee after we received applicants, is there a agreement to do that?
Seventy to a hundred, somewhere along that range, gonna cover the range of qualifications pretty well.
Right. So, anybody wanna make a motion, that would be what we were looking for, does anyone just insert that in there? Seventy to a hundred?
Commence right with experience.
Yeah.
Experience and qualification.
So, well, what I would find helpful is if we had a process, we don't need to decide it tonight, but if we had a process, how do you want, we're gonna get resumes in by October first, how do you want it to do this, do you want a committee, do you want?
We want to set up a committee, yes.
Just like we did the last time.
So, how do we want to, what will be the makeup of the committee?
I'd like to be on the committee, yes, for the eight, for the department.
So last time we had two select boards, we had a community member, we had representation actually from the department.
Each department.
Which, you know, we could talk about, we, we tried to do it, so there was one from each division, but that was also before the reorganization of the department, so might want to rethink that, but still, you know.
You should still.
Was there one other person?
There's specific needs for each division.
I think that was it, were there two community?
I think so, originally there was one from another community, a retired DPW director.
That's what it was, that's what it was, we had the fellow from Long Island.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, we had a, um, external DPW.
That would be fine, also.
Yep. I'm happy to do it again, or not, so if somebody else really wants to do it, John could.
If you have the time and you want to do it, I'm all for you doing it.
That's fine, fine, if you want to do it. Did a good job the last time, so we trust you again this time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Hank Barstow did express an interest in participating, just for, for what that's worth, you know, if people are comfortable with him, otherwise we could tell us that.
Okay.
Get the pin.
So one community member, so we're gonna look for maybe.
Well, Hank would be the community member.
Right, and then we would look for somebody else with DPW experience.
Yep.
Gilford Maury maybe step in?
I was, I was just gonna say, maybe Gilford Maury, a citizen, a DPW director up in Air Mission might be interested in it, if he's watching.
Marlo, Marlo, did you suggest something?
Hello, I mean, if I can help in any way also.
Oh, well, that's a very good point, I'm sorry, I'm just realizing, yeah, Marlo had commented earlier that because he's going somewhere, but he's not going anywhere, he's still relatively local, that, and he has a vested interest in seeing a lot of the work that he started, finished, that you said that you would offer to be on the committee if we.
Or offering assistance, so I, I think, I didn't.
Fine with that, I don't know.
Yeah, I would make five, I'm counting right.
One, two, three, four, and.
Hank, did you get it?
Yeah.
I think there was, yeah, I think there was five.
Who else?
Five, there's Hank.
Mr. Greater?
No, DeGrader was on.
No, Sharon was on.
Sharon was on, I was like Gary Vaynerchuk.
Sharon, Gary, Sharon, Gary, and Jerry.
Someone from the department.
Right, so would it make any sense to have Sharon and/or.
Two people from the DPW, so somebody from Wastewater and somebody from DPW?
I think Sharon was from Water, and Gary was from Highway, and I was from Wastewater.
Sharon has a good grasp on the administrative stuff, so maybe her on there as the water rep and some of that understands kind of the administrative.
Well, that would be Marlo there, right?
Yeah.
So, actually, that might be good, that would just keep it to the five.
If she's willing to do it.
Yeah, if she's willing to do it.
So is that the makeup of the committee then, all, all in favor? Motion?
You want me to make a motion? I make a motion that our DPW director search committee include David, Molly, Hank Barstow, Marlo, and Sharon in the DPW department.
Second. And Gilford Maury?
Oh, do we want to put him on there?
Well, no, I think we're saying Marlo.
Okay.
Marlo's the DPW director.
I think if he's interested, he should be asked first.
We could ask him.
Well, the only, the only concern I have is sometimes we have competing interests with our, he brings towns, I mean, I have five at Gilford, he was sitting on the committee before, but, you know.
Do you want me to say with the option of Gilford?
Sure.
If he's willing?
How about, yeah, propose a, is a.
Sure.
Alternate, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Has he expressed interest, or are we just assuming that he's interested?
Well, we just asked.
I think we're. You can blame me for.
That's why I threw it out. He's gonna blame me.
Nothing here, John.
Let me check my phone.
My phone isn't ringing yet.
Okay, so that makes up the committee, we'll wait for the applications to come in and go from there, thank you.
Well, sir, hold on one.
That was all in favor?
Aye.
Upstate.
All right, we're close, can we go ahead with this public hearing? Yes, because we already took care of this traffic beacon on the time, we, we did that, so the other thing was.
Trustee, library trustee.
Library trustee, we could do that quick.
Two announcements.
And we have, we saved a letter from Joanne Conesty in regards to Karen Pearlie resigning, and I think that we did talk about it in our last meeting, no, did we?
We have to go through a formal process.
Official process of replacing her, so I think we had, that Karen Pearlie had been a long time trustee at the Goodwin Memorial Library, and effective August first, she and her family are moving out of town and will no longer be served as the trustee, and we agree with Joanne that we are very grateful for Karen's service that she's given to us over the years with the library, she's been very instrumental in getting things done over there, so we certainly do appreciate all her hard work and thank her for her hard work, appreciate it.
She's gonna be Miss.
She's gonna be Miss for sure, and we will now start that process of filling the position.
So if anybody has an interest or make an announcement for the required position, that letters of interest will be accepted to the library, is it?
Project Brazil or Delaney Conesty.
That will, will meet with the library trustees and the select board on the nineteenth in order to take a formal vote.
We'd like to put that on our TV station, that would be nice for the library trustee.
Do you want me to email to an announcement?
That would be great.
So I'll have to take that.
That would be, that would be fine, thank you so much.
There's one other announcement, I'm going to submit an application to the Commonwealth Compact for the IT, and I need a formal vote of the board to submit that application, I'm gonna be submitting it on Tuesday.
Do you have the content for the application?
I am assembling as much as I can at this point, so, but it's gonna be due next week, and I just want to get the permission, the formal permission from the board to submit the application.
This is for the IT services?
For the IT grant.
We meet the twelfth, right?
We, for this grant, in the past, we received fifty thousand dollars for the mission system for the seven substations, so grants up to two hundred thousand dollars are possible, but a hundred thousand to fifty thousand are much more likely.
So when does it have to be?
Has to be by the fifteenth of September, and I will be in Maryland at that point, so I want it submitted by Tuesday.
Okay, but the only problem is we don't know what you're asking for yet.
Right.
I mean, I know you're asking for IT stuff, but we, we talked about a lot of different projects, I'm sure you've had conversations with other people.
We've talked about a lot of different things, so I've talked to the library, they're interested in AB equipment for their new building, that's a twelve thousand dollar request, talked to the collector's office about a new Vadar integrated tax billing and collection system, that would be twenty-two thousand dollars if I remember the amount correctly. There is an unknown amount of money that we could be using for body cams and dash cams for the police department, this is something that they want to do. There's a request from the assessor's office for twenty thousand dollars for vision aid, so I have a number of things that I'm trying to assemble and to try to package, the Commonwealth Compact will not fund things that they deem that we should be funding ourselves, so some of these requests are not going to be funded or even presented for funding, but the things that excite them, that they think are interesting, are much more likely to receive funding. You and I talked about a project over in North Hampton, having to integrate permitting.
Integrated permitting and also content management, shared, sharing and indexed documents so that people could.
Wait, modern things?
Modern things that everybody else has had for years and years, yeah, so, that's why I'm just wondering what you're.
I'm trying to put it all together in one big tasty stew.
So, I mean, just because we put the application, we don't have to accept these funds if we decide that a project is not sustainable, I'm not pursuing it out, but.
That's correct.
Or not sustainable, right.
Right. But it's foolish not to submit something.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's money out there, so you're certainly going to submit something for our projects to people, their wish list, so we want to take that into consideration, maybe, David, you could get your list ready together, could you run it by Molly, just to appease her?
Well, I just want to know what time, because.
I don't care what he goes for, as long as it goes for money that people have asked for, request for things, I think that's really important, and, you know, and incorporating some of the thoughts that you had also, so, you know, if you wouldn't mind if he would pull it together and then show it to you?
Yeah, it, it thinks more like how it integrates into our overall strategic plan, I mean, those are the things we'd want to prioritize.
Certainly the things that he just mentioned now are, you know, things that we've talked about that are.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to apply for the grant, as long as he runs it by Molly first, to make sure that it's in line with the strategic plans for the town and the IT.
Good.
So, second.
Good for you?
Here's a stack.
I don't think it's gonna be that intense, but if he just can show you what he's applying for, then I think we all agree with it, all in favor?
Aye.
Along, along that line, I want to add, grant, election season, seven hundred thousand dollar grant for the sewer, election season, we need to contact whatever representative we have, Anna Governor's Office, because the Lieutenant Governor came in to visit us, and we spoke with her, and she said she would take anything under consideration, and these are some issues that we need to consider with, with the Governor's Office, and I think the board needs to get a letter to the Governor's Office or make a phone call to them, and let them know that we've, we've come up with these things under our.
How about, how about if we draft a letter before next week's meeting and all of us could sign it?
Yes.
Would you do that?
Probably to the, the Governor's Office, yeah, with, with, with these specific, did you, Marlo, did you put those other two grants in?
Yes.
Okay, so there's three grants from DPW, you got?
There's a fourth one, that's the, the Walker Grant over at Campus Plaza.
Okay.
So we could put those in?
This IT grant, and just put them all in a letter and get it off to the Governor's Office, now, we got two months.
There's also that AD grant, just do it on October first, that we're gonna start working on right after you finish this one.
Right.
So, Jennifer, we'll draft a letter. We'll all sign it next week so it can go out.
Yeah, next application will be...
The lieutenant governor was really open to the discussion that we had. And she, you know, she did visit every town, and she did listen to all the complaints and criticisms. But they've done a good job up until this point. See what else they can get done for us.
Out of the three, I did prioritize that.
We have a 7:30 public hearing. Sorry. Sorry. We'll get back, we'll get back.
All right, as long as we just add them all in and sign it.
All right, we're good. Okay. So 7:30 public hearing is revocation of the taproom general on premises, all alcohol license. This has come to our attention that there has been delinquent in paying the infrastructure tax that we had imposed on them. We had made a deal with somebody to pay in a timely fashion, and that hasn't happened, so... David, you...
Yeah, so town of Hadley passed a bylaw that says, basically, that in the case of non-payment of any municipal charge, a business could be held accountable by a public hearing during which, after finding a fact, you can revoke, suspend, deny a permit under Mass General Law. We have two permits that are available for the taproom. One is the liquor license, and the other one is the entertainment license. Taproom was assessed a sewer impact fee. In negotiations, we came up with a payment schedule. First payment of $2,000 was paid. There are outstanding charges that have not been paid. We had a sit-down meeting with Mr. Joe Eckery and his partner. And we're not able to come to any kind of agreement as to payment, responsibility for that payment. And so now it gets kicked up to the select board level. There's an outstanding balance of $8,760.78. Payment of the fee will cancel the hearing. Jennifer, we have not received payment? Okay, so at this point, we'll turn it over to the board.
Okay. First, we have...
Joe.
Joe, and do you have anything that you would like to say about this?
Yeah. So I thought I'd stop in a little bit of history for those of you who weren't involved in the very beginning of the taproom. Sixteen months ago, we came in front of the planning board, met with the fire chief, met with the police chief, met with the board of health director, met with everybody. Jennifer, I spent a lot of time with Jennifer to go to get my permit for my state liquor license and subsequently my local liquor license. So for the first five months, from April through August, everything, no problems. Met all the goals, paid all the permits, did everything that we were supposed to do. And 12 days, well, actually, I sat in front of this committee as well, asking for a proration of my 2017 license, which you guys so graciously granted me. That was just the last couple of months of the year. And I paid my $3,600 liquor license fee for the beginning of 2018. So that was all great. 12 days before my opening, 12 days after I spent $50,000 on creating this business, I was told that I can't get my liquor license because the landlord has not paid a final fee. So just like I did when Jennifer told me the landlord didn't pay the taxes, I called the landlord and said, "You need to go downtown hall, fix this issue. I've got a business I'm starting to open, and I need my liquor license." So the landlord did come down here to talk about the sewer impact fee. And about three hours later, he came to my establishment and told me that it was my fee. And I said, "How can this be my fee? I didn't connect to a sewer. This is not my building. I'm just leasing a space." So I was, I had no other recourse. David talked to me about signing an agreement where I could make payments, so I did pay $2,000. But my liquor license was held over my head under duress. I signed an agreement because I had $50,000 on the line on a new business that I was starting. I told David at the time, I told David subsequently after that in letters, "This is not my bill. This is a sewer impact fee." And Section 2 of the state enabling statute states, I'm gonna read it to you. "Payments shall be made by applicants for connections to the sewer system of the town who are constructing or erecting new buildings or developing for industrial, commercial, or residential use." I have not put up a building. I do not own a building, and I do not connect to a sewer in the town of Hadley. This is the landlord's bill. We are sitting here today, guys, because you've given the wrong bill. You've given the right bill, potentially, to the wrong person. I said it eight months ago, and I'm saying it again. It's not my bill. The law in the state says it's not my bill. You guys are overreaching your authority by assigning this bill to whoever you think can pay it. But it's not, it does not belong to me. Now, I'll tell you one other thing before I finish this. I use, on average, 10.5 gallons of water a day at the taproom. Think about that. 10.5 gallons of water a day. My bill is $1,000 every three months. That's 10.5 gallons of water a day. You guys are putting a sewer impact fee on that building for 1,800 gallons of usage a day. I haven't, I just broke 1,800 gallons the whole time I was open. We use 10.5 gallons of water a day, and I'm being asked to pay a $14,000 sewer impact fee. That's not even fair to the landlord at that usage, 10.5 gallons. So that is the other reason that this thing doesn't make any sense to me. Doesn't make any sense to the lawyers I've talked to. Doesn't make sense to even some of the people sitting in this room I've talked to about it. So I'll at least turn that over to you, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I'll leave it at that.
I just have one question. You mentioned, when you were talking about the background, that you signed an agreement under duress. Are you saying that was the payment plan with David?
Yep. Held my liquor license over my head and saying, "We need this payment. Unless you are not getting your liquor license." It's exact words.
Do you also have an agreement with the landlord?
No, nothing. I got a lease with him.
Right.
But nothing to do with the sewer impact fee or anything?
Anything to do with water or sewer?
Just utilities. I pay the utilities.
Pay the utilities. Does he say you have to pay your water bill or anything like that?
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, I think the water bill's in the lease. It comes in his name, the water bill. That's why I pay the last three.
Marlo, do you want to speak too, as far as usage and any of those conversations you've had with either the building owner or the captain?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I'm not sure on the water calculations, but impact fees are derived through Title V sewer. Has nothing to do technically with the water usage. It affects the bill. In this case, I think originally, the building was put up and was gonna be either retail. I believe it was retail, and the impact fees were paid under retail for the full building, the suites. Under the understanding, under the sewer application, that if there's any change in use in any of the suites, additional impact fees will incur. So I think early on, Joe and I met first out of the gate to talk about these. And originally, I just, I got a lot of documentation here. Give me a second. Originally, he had, originally, 75 seats when we were doing the calculations, which was later reduced to 58 seats. And then it falls under, excuse me, I believe, bar or whatever, under Title V. So it's times so many gallons per day, times the...
1,800 gallons times 15, 50 times 60 seats.
Yeah, and that's how you arrive at the impact fees. So that's how it was arrived. And then for the retail credit that was given to that particular suite, it was deducted from the bill originally to arrive at...
15.317.
Yeah, it was originally, um, yeah, we're originally at 17,980. And then when the credit was retail reduced, it reduced it to 15,14117 for the impact fees for that particular...
Was for the whole building?
No, for that suite. It was the difference.
But I thought you paid 2,000 and there's a balance of eight, so...
Right, because there was a payment plan, I think, offered. I wasn't part of this, but a payment plan offered.
Roughly $4,000 every quarter.
So you paid more than two?
I paid two, just the two.
But 15 minus two is 13, not eight.
Because the final payment is due on October 1st. But he is not, the reason that 8,000 is there is because he missed the April 1st payment and the July 1st payment.
Oh, so it's not...
Yes, yes. I didn't include it because technically, he still has a month.
So the landlord paid the first round of sewer impact fees?
When he built the building.
When he built the building.
Right, but there was no tenants at the time, so he didn't bring it.
The documentation on your city website mentions that there's supposed to be a checklist that the developer is supposed to go through with the city to say, "Here's the average water we think is gonna be used here, and here's the maximum." I'd asked for that checklist, but there's no such checklist, I guess, in the town. So I wanted to know what that checklist said in the very beginning. The building, if my room can seat 70, the one next to me can seat 70, and then there's probably 30 or so on the other side. The occupancy of that building is well over 200. Now, if he just paid for 12, there's a huge balance there for potentially other people that could move into that building. But I couldn't, no one has that checklist. It was supposed to be part of the development plan that could be presented to me.
The form he's referring to is under the water regulations, hasn't been used. And I can't find out from any of the staff in there how long since it's been used. But the reason they stopped using it is because we now involve consultant firms and engineers as things go through planning and everything to give us that information rather than a customer give us information of what they think they might use for water. As you know, part of my goals and objectives was revamping the water and sewer regulations. And believe it or not, that was near the top to get rid of that off the website and on the regulations. That particular sheet has, you know, has no bearing on how we do business down here with the impact fees.
Marlo brought up the water usage. I'm happy to show you guys my last bill. It's 1,000 gallons. It was 900 gallons the last quarter, so it did go up one gallon per day. But I've got here pretty much a seat.
You know, I think we... See, over the last 10 years, what I have... In the last 10 years since this impact fee has been implemented, or 15 years, whatever it's been, we ran into these different situations time and time again. You're not the first, believe me. You know, we have other businesses that were owner-operators. We have other businesses that, to build a slab, and they don't know what businesses they're going to be putting into that complex.
Shouldn't they pay the maximum?
What do we assess the property at? Everyone at a restaurant with 200 seats in it?
Well, you assess me.
Where do you start?
You assess me for the maximum for this bar code. And very rarely have I had 60 people in there at a time. It's just an exorbitant, outrageous calculation, frankly.
Yeah, you know, on the water side, I can see your point there with the water bill. But on the wastewater side, when a restaurant goes in, and you've been through this process already with grease traps, you know, and that's all...
Don't have a grease trap.
I know, but that's all under Title V, new Title V regulations now too, that aren't really adopted. We haven't adopted the new Title V laws, honestly. So, but being that you've already paid one payment, and the owners have already paid a payment, knowing that everybody was aware of that, it needs to be paid by someone.
But I don't think anybody was aware of it. I don't know if the landlord was aware of it. I don't know.
Yeah, do we have documentation?
You got something to miss there?
Did the landlord get this bill?
Yeah, it was originally sent to him. And then whatever backroom deal happened in three hours, that I sent him down here, that he came to see me, now all of a sudden, it was my bill. Frankly, I think I had something the town, no disrespect, I had something the town could hang over someone's head. I don't know what you guys could have hung over Amir's head to have him pay it.
No, but respect that. I request that you not make presumptions about how we conduct business. It's probably not a good place to go. I can assure you there were no backroom, smoke-filled cigar smoking deals being made here. I think we're trying to resolve this. I'm trying to, I was here on the select board when you came in. Appreciate the taproom, the business you're providing, and I'm trying to process this, but don't certainly want any insinuations being made.
I apologize for that. I'm a little frustrated myself, as you can probably tell.
I understand.
In the past, we've had agreements with owners of the property and with tenants of other properties. So like I said, this is not new to Hadley for sure. It's not the first time that a situation like this has come into this room.
I think you guys are overstepping your bounds and having business owners who did not make the property, who did not build the property. I don't think you guys have the authority to put that fee on that person. Just, you have the authority to put it on the developer, not the person who moves into the developer's building. The statute doesn't say that, and I think you guys can't overextend yourself, can't overstep that.
So can I just, again, I'm just trying to understand the facts here. So Amir is your landlord?
Yes, correct.
What was the conversation? I mean, how did, how did this move from Amir to you? Amir must be hanging his hat on something, saying that you have a legal obligation to pay it and not him.
No, but it's a great point. David, in our conversation just before, when he was trying to orchestrate this signing, he said, "Hey, we're gonna add Amir to this as well, just in case," and this was almost his exact words. "In case you hit it out of the park and you get so big, you need to move to another building, Amir will be attached to this sewer impact fee." Now, I don't know if he ever had Amir sign anything, but that was a statement that was made to me. And that goes back to my other problem. Whose bill is it, guys? It's not my bill. So you can't just assign it to somebody else or try to find somebody else to pay for it. So that's, there was never an attachment to me on any of that. I don't know if David attached Amir to any of that. I'd ask that question if he did ever sign off on that.
Marlo, do you, it looked like you were, do you have some documentation in hand?
I mean, I wasn't part of the agreement between Mr. Nixon and Mr. Eckery. I mean, it was to my understanding that there was an agreement between the landlord and the tenant, and the tenant was to pay for it. That's what I was told.
I think that's where we're going in ultimately, as part of the liquor license application, a copy of the lease agreement, a lease agreement. In my mind, it's very clear that municipal charges having to do with utilities are the responsibility of the person who is leasing the property from Mr. Amir.
That's what I was just trying to get to. Where is it that it's...
I can read it to you right here from the lease.
So I have suggested that Mr. Eckery get together with his landlord and work out an agreement among them. This is clearly a dispute.
It's a landlord-tenant dispute right now, yeah.
Exactly.
No, I don't think, I mean, municipality fee, a water bill and an electric bill. That's what I was referring to, not for me to pick up any other, what about any other fee that Amir would have?
It says, number six, water sewer, tenant agrees to be responsible for paying all water and sewer usage for unit C.
Usage.
Usage.
And I am doing that early every quarter.
It's not anything with the infrastructure fee, though. So does it say anything about tying in?
If we were to go down that route and say that it's Amir's responsibility, our recourse would be to revoke his occupancy certificate? Is that a possibility, or would that be the step that we would take?
That would be the logical thing to do.
So in the end, it ends up revoking your occupancy certificate and basically avoiding your liquor license anyway, so we're kind of...
I think Amir's smart enough to not lose five tenants' rents by having that done. He owned this bill in the very beginning. And frankly, that then, now it becomes a landlord-tenant issue, right? When he shuts me down, now I'm happy to take him to court and take that one out.
I think it belongs with the person that built the property. I don't think it belongs to a tenant when it's the infrastructure. The water and sewer is a totally different bill that you are responsible for because that's your usage for the building. I would suggest that we bring Mr. Amir in.
Well, what I'm wondering is, to your point, I mean, well, we could take responsibility for bringing him in. We could also grant a 30-day extension or something and ask them to reach some sort of resolution on it to see.
Well, I think we need to, first of all, send him a letter and, in our discussion, certainly say that we have decided that you, being the owner of the property and the builder, the developer of the property, that you are responsible for the initial installation of the infrastructure of water sewer, not your tenant. This is part of your project.
How are all the other ones?
Yeah, the other tenants haven't been...
Well, we've done this in the past. It's people that actually own the building and the property, and we've made a deal with them that, you know, they have, can do a payment plan. But they're the actual developer and owner of the building where... But they're the actual developer and owner of the building, where this is a tenant, not the owner and developer of a piece of property. So in the past, with like...
Unless it was in a, because there's a couple of issues that I know we ran into. But I think it was in the agreement between the property owner and the tenant at the time.
Correct.
You know, I...
We had the farm meeting house with the hotel down there. And we did a, you know, we did a payment plan with them, but they own the property, they own the building, we developed it. Voters did, but he also owns the property, you know, did it there, so...
And Seattle was one of those.
That was another one, that was an owner thing.
So can I make a motion to continue this hearing?
You know, I got one more. The property owner put in all the grease traps and paid all the impact fees for the strip mall and fund depot also. So that's not what I do. So it's, I think you're correct, it should go back to the property owner.
What about the new one that just went in down here?
It isn't going in yet.
Well, there's already tenants in, there wasn't a new one.
You mean the white one that just opened up?
I think their situation is their occupancy. So I'm not sure how that's calculated out, but it's how they're calculating who's in there and what they're doing.
Well, I was just trying to see for them.
It depends on the establishment, too, because there's different gallons per bid.
It is.
Have you, did you have something to add, Marla, or something like your...
I did, I did want to say that, I mean, I dug through records down there, you know, as impact fees have gone back to two thousand eight, nine. Freshen my memory, but...
Ten years.
And all my dealings in the paperwork of shuffling through that is we've been dealing directly with the landlord or the owner of the property that's building. You know, so like I said, this is a first for me also, and I couldn't find a second.
As far as the impact fees, the town meeting voted for the impact fees, I believe. And they were impacted and they're registered with the state. So they're all legal, the fees are all legal, but you'd think it's not correct.
I don't disagree that they're not legal, I just disagree with who's, in this particular case, and it sounds like a lot of history's on my side. You got the tenant paying it.
So David, I'll go ahead.
You had a motion that you...
Yeah, I was going to make a motion that we continue this hearing for sixty days, that we send a demand letter or a hearing notice to Amir.
Within that time period?
Within thirty days to have that hearing happen regarding revoking his occupancy certificate. If that's something that we can do as the next step, which will give you guys time to...
Have a conversation.
Sell them up here.
Yeah. And that way, you can continue operating and maybe we can put a little leverage on him to pay his bills.
And I would second that motion with a polite suggestion. Just would like to make sure that going forward, again, I understand there's a lot of frustration, but we've got a lot of municipal employees that are trying to do their jobs. Sometimes these things get sticky, so asking for some, everybody to maintain a sense of calm until we can resolve this.
Okay, yep, I got my word.
I would say also that thirty days brings us into that last payment's due also, just as a side note.
All those in favor?
I got a second.
Oh, sorry, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstate.
Upstate, too.
If you want to yell at somebody, let's come down and buy a beer and all this and do it, okay? Yeah, like you saw it.
Three and two extensions.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Good luck to you.
Thank you. All right, so last thing on our agenda is the library senior center fire substation. We've already done the fire substation, we've got updates to have. Library and senior center. We'll take it from there. We have a... Planning board meeting next week, on the eleventh, to determine if they're going to yea or nay this project again.
I'd like to just say, I know we have spent a lot of activity lately about trying to get the two-for-one parking in the entire site. And there's a lot of concepts out there right now. And I just want to see if we can maybe put on hold a specific discussion about what's being proposed right now. Because I think there's a lot of options in the air. And I just want to try to give it some time for the OPMs to come to consensus, because it seems like there are some differences.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So does this group need to see that final plan before the planning board? Or can we work together as a group with the members of this group, like on the tenth, when we are going to get together and finalize that plan before the eleventh? Or does it need to come before the select board before it goes before the planning board?
So one of the issues I have with the process is that we're spending a lot of time and money changing plans, trying to figure things out, basically throwing things against the wall and seeing what sticks with the planning board, and none of it has so far. And we're spending a lot of money on redesigns and time and effort from all aspects of the town and police. So... Last I heard was the plan was transmitted to the planning board today, the new revised plan, correct?
But that's from the senior center, and there's a different one on the library.
So typically, can I tell you what the process has been? The process, the whole way along, that we've worked well together on, is that they come, the seniors have an idea, we have an idea, both architects may draw something different, and then they come together and come up with one solution. Unfortunately, tonight, we are still in the phase of, we have two different ideas out that still need to come together, which has been a normal part of the process, right? If you were working with a neighbor, that's how you would work, right? Like you would have your own ideas, and then you would come together with one idea. So unfortunately, this evening, we are right in that middle of the phase. We've kind of put some ideas together, the seniors have put some ideas together, and our OPMs are working together to merge those ideas into our final plan.
And we're all pushing very hard for a two-to-one party.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Right, and so the idea is that that would meet the requirement we are, that plan would meet the parking requirement. So I think for us, it would benefit us to give us that time to put that plan together. So to answer your question, that is actually a normal part of the process. It's not an additional part. You may have other things, but this is.
What I'm saying is the process is not working the way we're doing it now. That's my point. So continuing the way we're doing things, we're just sending things over, sending things over and spending money on redesigns and the meantime, isn't getting it done. That's the problem I have with the way we're doing things now, so...
But are we ever going to achieve those needs regardless of what we do?
I mean, I'd like to spend tonight talking about what's called strategy, right? I mean, regardless of what winds up on, so there are a couple of scenarios here, right? One is that at the end of the last planning board meeting, the direction was, you still don't meet the parking requirements because we don't, we're not going to accept the Dover amendment. So people were dispatched, so to speak, to see if they could find and said, can we come back if we can find another way? So that may be yes or no, depending on what happens with that group. So if we can just start with the premise that some way, somehow, the OPMs come together and we do find another way outside of the Dover amendment exemption to meet the parking requirements, and we go to the planning board, they're either going to say yes, or they're still going to say no. And what I'm, what I'd like to spend time figuring out is, I think we need to position ourselves for either one of those scenarios, right? And I think that gets to your point, too. I mean, it's like...
I think the major scenario is that we took an eight-thousand-square-foot building, made it into a twelve-thousand-square-foot building, and put it on the same site, having developed these problems. Now we're facing the problems of trying to, instead of building a building to fit the site and the amount of property that we had, we've expanded that building to twelve-thousand square feet, and it just didn't fit in giving us what we needed. We can't expect the planning board to change their bylaws to suit a municipal piece of property when they haven't done it for everybody else. So they do have some guidelines that they have to follow.
But that's what I said, start with the premise.
But we're not meeting it with, you're not meeting, you've taken away a patio, you haven't really taken away enough of the building. I would be very happy if there was a ten-thousand-three-hundred-something-square-foot building, if you knocked that down by less than two-thousand square feet, to give you the right proper amount of space to park, keep your green space, because there's still a lot, you still have to have green space within your property, and that's part of a bylaw also. So now you're taking some of that away, too, which they're going to look at. It's another thing for them to yea-nay next week. And, you know, we're just, we just need to come to a better compromise of what we can do with this building and make it work. And I think even ten-thousand square feet, ten-thousand, a little bit plus, is going to give us what we need for this town. And it might not be what people want to hear, but I think it's what we need to do with making a compromise.
What I'd like to do is put a motion on the table that we direct the senior center building committee to reduce the size of the building to ten-thousand-three-hundred-fifty square feet or less, which based on planning board calculations would satisfy all the green space, parking requirements, et cetera, would prevent robbing green space in surrounding areas from the library, which right now is surrounded by pavement and concrete on basically all sides, and make the site less cramped. And the argument, I've been hearing a lot from people in the town about this the last week, the argument that this is going to cost money for a redesign, you're right, it will cost money. But if we're shaving off two-thousand square feet off the building, that additional cost for a redesign will be more than canceled out in construction savings. So there's no argument there whatsoever. The voters voted for a senior center, and that's what we're going to give them. But what we're doing right now is not giving a senior center or a library. Instead, we're giving them additional bills, bills, and bills, and expanding project costs, and it needs to stop. So that's my motion on the table, to direct the committee to reduce the size to ten-thousand-three-hundred-fifty square feet or less.
I'll second that for discussion.
I just feel like even if we do that, we're still not going to get the vote.
Yeah.
And it's going to be how many months down the road?
You know, I agree with all these points, but I've said, and I've seen it year after year after year with the elementary school, with the police and fire station. We went to a full-time, we're going to a full-time fire department, we can't house our people in it. We cannot adapt to that building, there's no room for expansion. Elementary school, can't go up at the elementary school with three wings. I just had this discussion with David last night. There's no room for expansion, whether you think it's too big or not. At some point, you're going to run into a situation where you're going to need to expand this building. Where are you going to expand it? The library, I don't know if it'll ever need to be expanded or not, but at some point, maybe it will. And what are we going to do then?
Yeah, I... Joyce and I had this conversation while, when all this started out.
We've all had this conversation at one time.
When this all started out, it made sense to me that the building was going to come out somewhere around ten-thousand square feet. I really fully expected that. That's not what the building design committee came up with. I know the process sitting on the library building design committee, we went through benchmarking and all of that. We had assurances, it was pretty, but assurances from the senior center building committee that they had gone through a similar process in terms of benchmarking and all of that. Part of the argument was, you know, I'm just going to say it again, because everybody knows this. This is definitely not a poster child for how projects should be run, I mean, we get that. But nor am I willing to say the select board was completely at fault, the building committee was completely at fault, any planning board's completely at fault. It's not anybody's problem. I'm going to keep coming back to the, think about what we're trying to do with a whole bunch of volunteers and part-time elected officials. That's my mantra, I'm going to keep saying that. But putting that aside, we are where we are.
And we need to fix it, we need to all come together and fix it.
And I think we're this close to actually being able to present a joint design, joint site plan, excuse me, to the planning board next Tuesday that meets the letter of the law. And it is up to that planning board to then decide in their purview, as a planning board with their charter, whether they want to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I agree that there's so much emotion and personal opinion involved in this that it's not obvious to me that if we came back with a ten-thousand-square-foot building, that that would not energize people to say, good, we figured out a way to make this happen, and by the way, we didn't really want that building anyway. And next thing you know, we're going to keep getting caught in these, you know, my way or the highway, behind-the-scenes conversations. And I think this needs to play out in the light of day. The planning board sent the projects off. Go ahead, see if you guys can figure it out. It's not obvious, maybe there won't be a joint site plan next Tuesday, I don't know. I'm very hopeful, because we're pretty darn close.
More hopeful.
I agree with David from the standpoint that when I envisioned what this two-project parcel would look like, I wasn't really seeing the concrete. But that's also the bylaw that we have, that our planning board has, and I'm not saying it's wrong of them, but they've decided to not offer any opportunity for leeway on that. So just like, you know, I don't want somebody telling the select board how they should do it. I don't think we should be telling the planning board that they need to walk away from their rules and regulations. So we are where we are.
Exactly.
And that's fine.
Another perfect example of this is our fire and security systems in our municipal buildings. You know, we have the fire chief going around mandating all of these because of state law for all the businesses and homeowners now, for that matter. And our own buildings are out of code, you know, and we finally made it to this point where we're getting them all up to date here. You know, the water regulations, the sewer regulations, all this stuff that we're mandating people to do that we're not doing ourselves. It's coming around now, I mean, it's, we're there, but we need to keep up with it and think about this stuff before we make some of these decisions.
Well, and in defense of the planning board and the planning board's mission, I think what's really sad, again, not placing blame, it's just the way it's been, but what's really sad is that the planning board hasn't been doing an awful lot of work that the planning board needs to do and should be doing, because they've been so absorbed in these two projects. The moratorium, this parking thing, it could have caught up, they haven't had a chance to even discuss it because they're going meeting to meeting just talking about the site plan. So that's unfortunate for the town, because we've lost an awful lot of time with the good work that they should be doing.
The moratorium, the moratorium issue is a big, a revenue.
So what I'm getting at is, I don't care to assess blame, we are where we are. So what I'm looking for is a way that will virtually guarantee one additional vote, because it takes out all the concerns that the people...
Virtually is my problem, is what you just said.
But if, so going back to our second option, if the planning board says no, we are forced to basically sue ourselves as the town and spend money on lawyers on both sides. And this could be dragged out for five, however many years in court, and we still have neither project. We lose the library grant, on and on. So what I'm looking to do is to give us the best legal standing we have. So that way, if this does go to court, we can say to the judge or to whoever else that says, look, we meet the exact letters of the bylaw. There's no creative interpretations here, there's no Dover amendment application required in order to meet the bylaws, et cetera.
But this plan would actually likely do that next Tuesday, David, that's my problem.
And not spend all that money for that whole redesign with the delay of months to do the redesign.
The site's too cramped as it is, it's jammed.
But that's also not, that's subjective, not...
It is subjective.
And that's, that's fine, and I'm making that subjective observation, so it's on the table.
But the thing is, is that the green space and the parking and everything meets the calculations set forth by the planning board with these options, so...
Well, I'm just not waiting for wasting the additional taxpayer money, which is throwing things against the wall and seeing what sticks. We've done it way too often.
But I think we have the hearing scheduled for next Tuesday, so today's Wednesday.
And have they taken, have they taken a vote yet?
Straw vote.
No, just a straw vote. And the straw vote said that it didn't meet the... And the straw vote said that it didn't meet the requirement. So the committees started working on that again, which is what, what these guys are talking about. And it looks like there will be something that should meet what they articulated as their concerns. There have been many other concerns articulated that aren't specific to the site plan approval itself. They're, you know, getting personal opinion, which again, we all have.
Public comment?
We all have. And my, you know, my concern is, is precedent setting. I don't, I don't, I don't want to spend taxpayer dollars unnecessarily, but nor do I want to get us into a situation where, you know, a developer comes in and they're in front of the planning board and then somebody wants something and then it's just, it's a slippery slope and I, and I don't think anybody wants it in the other direction either. So I just feel like, again, in the light of day, just give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
But like, like you said, the, the bylaws are the bylaws and the way the select board, or the way the planning board is choosing to interpret them is in their purview. So we can't tell them they're wrong because they have that right to interpret their bylaws. So rather than try to force them into court or to bend their will to, to say yes to the project, why not meet the strict bylaws? Why not make it so there's no question whatsoever that we need to.
But that's what I'm saying, this plan is likely going to do that.
I do not remember any time in history, in the amount of time I've worked in town, John, even people who worked here longer than I have, that no other board has ever sued any other board.
Yeah. And that's the, and if we go to the planning board and they vote no on this project, that's where we are.
Oh, it actually has happened, has it?
That's where we are.
Yeah. I, I don't think anybody wants to go there, Joyce.
Well, I'm not going there, I'll tell you that right now. I have no intentions.
Here's the thing, as we're sitting here, everybody watched that planning board meeting, I don't know, everybody watched it, I'm sorry if people watched it. A lot of people watched that planning board meeting. What is it about that meeting? I believe there may have been one member who vocalized that, that it was unlikely that this project under any circumstance would get his vote. But the other four did not say that. So if in fact, not, not at the meeting, and again, if, if there's something else, I think we want to be really, really careful because, oh, okay, a little bit more, okay, 10,000 square feet, well, maybe that's not all that we want. Maybe we want something else. I mean, I think we have to assume that they're professionals, they know what their purview is and that they're going to do what they need to do on Tuesday.
And I believe the OPMs are in contact with the planning board, making sure that, you know, their calculations they're using for the parking, the green space, floor area meets the intent of the bylaw as it's viewed by the planning board, not their own interpretation, which was the problem in the past.
Can we talk about the cost for a minute though? I mean, because David's raising a good point in terms of you reduce the square footage, everybody knows that the cost of a building is X dollars per, per square foot, right? So you reduce it by X amount, logic says that the project goes down by that amount. But can we just talk through the permutations of what could happen here? Because everything has a cost associated with it. In particular, sheer exhaustion on my part, I'll tell you, is part of it, but.
We might be there.
I think we're already there.
Very close.
So when you, when you think about what could happen, if we, if we were to go to the planning board next week and a plan is presented and it, on the surface meets the criteria, again, they can vote yes with a four and one. I think, I think the one's pretty solid. So it could be a four and one majority vote and good to go and onward we go. And then the senior center would continue with the bid process and all of that, right? So they, they would be going. And we would still have the conversation about whether or not at some point it makes sense to do overlap and swing space and all of that, right? But if they vote no, one option is we can certainly, if they vote no, then.
Dead, if they take the vote.
The project's dead until, so you can't, we couldn't then bring back 10,000 square foot redesign.
You would have to, you can't bring back the same project if they, if they got a no vote. If you do something substantially different, then you can bring it back.
Right. So question, would a 10,000 foot redesign be substantially different?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a legal interpretation.
Well, it would be a planning board interpretation because we've had legal interpretations. It would be a planning board interpretation. So that would be one possibility. The other possibility would be what we were saying, we certainly don't think is in the town's best interest, which would be to.
Go to court.
Go to court over it. It could happen, but that's not necessarily what anybody wants to do. We could ask for opinion and have the building permit issued, or ask for opinion from the building inspector. The building inspector theoretically could issue a permit.
Then we'd be sued again.
Exactly. Then we go to court and we're in the same spot.
We're in the same spot. So the two, I'm just, I'm just, because everybody's talking about this, I want to lay out everything that's in people's minds.
Plus they have also said that they would go with the library so that we wouldn't lose the grant, but there's been opposition to not separate the two projects.
Yeah, because that was originally the, the thing, was that they wanted both projects to be submitted at the same time because it was the whole site, correct?
But now they're saying that they would.
Entertain splitting the site.
Correct.
From talking, I can't see that. What are you going to do with everybody?
For how long?
In the Hooker School for how long?
Yeah. And again, think about the cost associated with it. Because there's a price tag to all of this.
Absolutely, the price tag to everything.
Yeah, probably the, the cheapest price tag would be to downsize the building, make sure that we meet every possible out they have as far as green space, make the site work better as a whole between the two facilities. And yes, that's subjective, but it takes that argument away. And I didn't just pick the numbers out of, out of, out of thin air. These numbers are computed based on, from planning board members saying that if a building was to be around this size, it would most likely meet all the parking, all the green space and all the requirements that we would have.
But, but again, we.
Without any Dover amendment.
Without Dover.
But that's what we're working on right now that we'll have Monday.
It's just, it's trying to squeeze it out and it's not, it's not what's best for the town.
Well, so, and then, so I was going through the scenarios. The other scenario is on Tuesday night that something that meets all of the criteria is presented and a straw poll is taken. Then it may be, again, a couple of people saying no. Then we could go back and look at a redesign. I mean, we don't have to force a vote or do it.
But.
But every time we do this, it's ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching in terms of escalating building costs.
And every time we do this, we risk them saying, okay, let's take a vote. And then we're, whether we're ready or not, then once they make the vote, they make the vote. And we can't control whether they take a vote or not. So we're rolling the dice every single time.
You can withdraw the project.
Right, before they take the vote.
Again, I, I think that's, that's playing games with, with the process rather than going by the intent and the purpose of the planning board and the bylaws, rather than just meeting the letter of the law.
So what's the guarantee if we wait two months, we do this redesign? What's the guarantee they vote again?
Is there jeopardy of losing the grant for the library?
No, but if we do all this redesign, we, we go with this plan, how do we guarantee that that will suffice a vote?
So there is no guarantee, but the plan, but based on the historical actions of the planning board, I would say this plan has a much better chance of succeeding than just continuing with the throw things at them. This, this takes care of their concerns, I guess I should say, their, their valid concerns that were brought up. Some of the stuff that was off to the side, you know, it is what it is. But the, the valid concerns with the bylaws and whatnot, it takes those into account and meets those concerns. So that's, that's, you're right, it has no guarantee of succeeding, but I think the chance is much better than what we're giving.
Well, I don't want to speculate. I mean, I would want to hear it directly from the horse's mouth.
Well, I mean, they're not going to be giving a, they're not going to vote until they have it in front of them. So I mean, how are we going to?
Well, there's no way we're going to do a major redesign like that between now and Tuesday. So we're delaying it no matter what, right?
Well, yeah, we're delaying it either way, but again, we're risking them voting on it or it just costing more money as we go here.
But that, we could be in the same situation two months from now with a 10,350 square foot.
I go back to the Dover amendment. We left a meeting specifically being told, and even after the meeting when the cameras stopped rolling, planning board members coming up and saying, if you get that third opinion, we're good, but make sure you get it from, you know. So we did that. We spent money to get one of the top attorneys in Boston with expertise in the Dover amendment and, and got the opinion.
Yeah.
And then.
But again, we're trying, we were trying to work around the issue and so we spent $2,500 on a letter from an attorney for a legal interpretation or legal opinion, I should say, so we could skirt around the bylaw and instead we're still in the same place and we still threw $2,500 down the drain.
It wasn't, it wasn't skirt, but, but my point being, unfortunately, I, I don't have confidence in deal making. And, and that's what we're doing. We're making, we're trying to make a deal. I don't know that changing this to 10,000 square feet, which is going to cost a fair amount of money to redesign and upset a lot of people, everybody's upset anyways, I guess that doesn't matter, but you know, is going to achieve the end result that we want. There's, I mean, there, and I solely base that on the fact that when that Dover amendment thing was pulled, I realized that there was no clarity. And I, you know, I would hope that you would have more confidence and, I mean, I don't think you would have brought it up to us if you weren't really confident that the vote would go the way that you wanted to, but I was equally confident when I walked out of the room the other night, that that Dover amendment legal opinion letter, which we didn't know by the way how it was going to come out. That letter could have gone, very much gone in the other direction. Didn't really make sense it would, but it could have. And yet, the, it changed again.
And I believe we have to not be too, I mean, we have to be not too scared of litigation because if we can't meet all the.
We can't afford litigation. We cannot afford it.
But if we meet all the criteria and they still vote no, we, what, our hands are tied.
Yeah, but then we can go to the taxpayers and we can justify, we can say, look, we've met every, we've done, we've, we've negotiated, we've, we've gave up things, we've done everything we possibly could to try to appease the planning board and they still said no. And under those circumstances, I could go to the taxpayers and say, yes, we need to spend the money to sue it and, and sue them and do what's best for the town and what the voters asked for. But until we've done that.
But why are you saying?
But that is what we're doing.
Well, you want us to do it Tuesday night?
You're just coming up with 10,350.
On Tuesday what?
Again, if the, if the building committee, OPMs, not the members, but the, but the guys with the pencils and the rulers that do all the actual measurements come together and right, the last I had left off was there was an, an 800 square foot issue. And it seems that they're, they've found a way to resolve that. Again, the committees haven't met to formally agree on that, but hopefully Monday would, night they would know.
You guys are meeting Monday night?
Well, the library, the building is, and hopefully with some representatives. So we would know at that point if that met their criteria. So, so what it sounds to me like you're saying is that there are other criteria.
What I'm saying is they said that the site plan that we have is not going to cut it and that even some of the redesigns that were sent up this past week, it may not be the final redesign, but the redesigns that were sent up, even the planning board was not really sure whether it met the green space requirements or the parking requirements without applying the Dover Act or Dover amendment. And we've, we're very clear from two members of the board that they're not going to vote for anything that's using the Dover amendment whatsoever. So the taxpayers didn't ask for the money to be wasted and for this to go to court.
Exactly.
And this is going to go to court.
This is exactly what I'm saying. What are you going to tell the taxpayers now that voted four times for this? And we're not coming to any conclusions here. We're just costing them more money.
We just need to take the leadership.
And not all, it's, and like Molly said, it's not just us, it's the planning board.
Right.
It's us. And the two committees are doing everything they possibly can to resolve this, you know? I mean, we need to compromise, but we're really at a stalemate here, you know?
Comments from Jane?
I would request another week. Instead of making an amendment to reduce everything, we have things in the works that look like we will meet green space, we will meet parking and see what happens.
So what's in the works? How, how are you going to get that additional green space and parking?
We don't need extra green space. We have extra green space as it is. So we're using some of that for parking.
The last I saw, the last redesign eliminated all the excess, so it's the bare minimum of green space on the site, possibly a little bit too much depending on the calculations. So what I'm asking is how, how are you going to squeeze more parking out of, out of the site?
I respectfully disagree with your green space calculation and I don't have my OPM here, they don't have their OPM here, but they're working on it and they are aware of the ramifications and the limitations.
And they've been in direct contact with the planning board.
They are working.
Yeah. And I think maybe we should just make it clear, if they can't get the, get it, we don't, we reschedule.
Yes.
Yeah, we reschedule that Tuesday meeting.
Or we ask for continuation or whatever.
Yeah, whatever it is, yeah.
Well, if that's the case and they can squeeze it out, why wasn't this done six months or a year ago?
Because every meeting we went to, they made a new requirement and we have been going along and.
But the two to one has not been, that hasn't changed.
It's been there from the beginning.
Now, but that originally did meet the two to one, it was just the calculation definition was different.
Right.
Which, they have the same calculations.
Independent, independent.
And their, the planning board's interpretation, so that's what I'm saying. I, I think that's the.
Yeah, you'd, you'd have to go way back to the beginning.
Well, regardless, this is not doing.
All right, so there's a motion, there's a motion on the table and go forward with the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
You want to reduce it to 10,000?
Try it. What else are we going to do?
Before next Tuesday? Does that stop everything?
No.
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 Let's be realistic, it's going to take, it's going to take time to do. So what I ask is, we'd have to talk to Jim or someone on the planning board and see the best manner to proceed.
Time frame for extending it?
If we can, I don't know if you can maybe get some, from my understanding is that the planning board doesn't need to know what's inside the building. They don't need to know how offices are arranged and interior walls. They just need to know.
No, I'm sorry, but they, they have to know what's inside the building. You can't just give them a footprint and then backfill it afterwards.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that the fine details.
This is what we're building.
The fine details.
Yeah, right there.
The fine details don't need to be there. The, the size of the building and how the parking is going to be accomplished is what needs to be there. So if we could come up with something by Tuesday, great. If not, then maybe we ask the planning board to hold off on the hearing for a couple of weeks or whatever it takes. It's up to you how you want to proceed, but we need to get it built and get it done and stop wasting money. That's what I'm asking.
So I haven't got a clear message for what you just said.
So the clear message is that we've asked.
Directed.
Directed the senior center building committee to reduce the size of the building. So stop what we're doing now and try and make a compromise for next Tuesday.
Not for next Tuesday.
For next Tuesday, we're going to have contact with.
If they can, if they can, that's fine, but if they can't.
Sure, if they could.
Yeah, it's not going to happen.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if they can reduce the size of it and give them the space that they need and want, and I think with that size of a building, that we'll be able to meet their specifications. And I think we still can, for 10,350 feet, that we can get a good decent senior center also.
You've got cities like Greenfield with 8,000 square feet of senior center and other cities with, that are much larger than us that have smaller spaces and can make use of them. So I'm not saying that fits Padley's needs, but there's got to be some negotiation and some compromise or something.
So that's what we would like to direct the committees to do, is to reduce the size[1753.16] So that's what we would like to direct the committees to do, is to reduce the size of the building.
So it's the committee meeting the OPM. So they should instruct Phil Palumbo and Colliers to-
Do we want to get a price for how much this change is going to cost?
Well, I think that's going to be the first step, but-
And does the select board need to vote on that? On that cost?
Well, it's going to have to come out of the-
That's a change order.
It's going to come out of the appropriated money.
We've all had our two designs. We have a totally new-
It'll be a change order.
It'll be a change order.
We've done change orders before.
With the elementary school building?
I was on the elementary school building committee. I don't know how many change orders we did on that. Some were unnecessary.
I remember voting and I had just become legal to vote on the elementary school.
Makes me old, John.
I don't know. But we went through, how many designs of that building?
Several.
Okay, so, so the vote's been taken, so the select board majority is instructing. So just from a practical standpoint, James, you're the chair of the committee, so you're going to go back to Phil Palumbo tonight, tomorrow morning and say, "Stop the work on the joint plan."
Yeah, unless you guys want to split them and move forward that way, but it's, that's-
Well, no, I mean, there's, I'm talking about the one that was being presented.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean-
Just reduction.
So strictly work on the reduction plan.
Why I voted this way and why I agree with David on this point is we can't stop this process. We need to really abide by the laws that are made by our town and hopefully it'll pass. I, I know it's, it's not what everybody wants, but if this is the compromise that we have to hook forward, then this is what we have to do.
I don't want to lose, what, $2 million, $3 million of-
Yeah. Of, of the grant money from the library at this point and, and whatever we got going on with the senior center.
Well, I would again say that given another week, I think we're very close to getting everything that they need.
Well, we're beyond that at this point, so we need to make the change.
Well, I understand that.
So.
And we'll have contact with the chair of the planning board to ask them, him, what our next step will be.
Right.
Before next Tuesday.
Well, it's going to have to be another joint site plan. And the, the joint site plan is going to have to take into account the reduced-
I mean, does this mean we have to resubmit the entire application?
That's my question from the library perspective. So our original plan that we sent to town meeting-
But you're not changing the size of your building and your-
No, but their drainage and everything is tied in, so it's a, it's a single site, site plan.
I don't think it's going to adjust the water and sewer that much for 10,000 square feet.
Well, we don't know. It's a-
We don't know, yeah.
Well, we'll find out.
Same, the same as the thing, you know? It's going to cost X less, but that could get eaten up in escalation charges pretty easily, too.
What happens if we talk to Jim and he says this requires an entire resubmit? Start from day zero.
We're going to talk to Jim tomorrow.
I'm saying, what if he says that? And it's another six months or, when did we start this? April? So, five months of going through site plan approval.
Well, we've got to find out before we take that next step.
But we voted already.
Yeah, we already voted, that's the problem.
Well, we have to find out from Jim if it does require that next, for that.
But maybe we should have found that out before we voted.
Taken the vote, that's what it is, so.
But I think Christian's asking, so, so who's, so you, you guys are going to talk to Jim Maxymoski tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, I'll call him.
Okay. And find out exactly what's involved, but then that-
We will let you know.
Yep.
And then if it needs to take a different change of vote, then we can-
Well, we can just talk about it on September. Because we're meeting September 12th, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll be meeting on the 12th. And then the question is that it would seem that there's really no reason for the planning board to meet on the 11th.
Not for us in any event.
You're the only one on the agenda, I think.
That, that was the only agenda on there. And the library at this point will go, well, I mean, we can keep going with the, because we're on to the interior stuff anyway.
Yeah, we're, we're just going to-
We're just going to keep going with the-
We have work to do. We're fine. But we do need to know what the timeline is in terms of going back. Are we again going as a joint project or are we now proceeding on our own timeline? So I just think we need to-
We will have that information for you.
I'll get that first thing tomorrow and I'll send it to David to distribute.
Awesome. And then, then that we would also need, I'm saying, now I'm saying, we, just on the committee, we would need to know if it is a joint plan, then we're going to want an estimate from Phil on, you know, can he just sit in the, in the wings and wait to see what Colliers presents to him and then wrap around it? Or does he feel like there's a cost, additional cost on, on the site?
There would be additional costs.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, but how much?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we go forward jointly, there will be additional costs.
Yeah.
To the library, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Obviously to the senior center as well.
Right.
All right. Get that, can we break tomorrow with the announcements?
Yep, you get that tomorrow morning. And then anything else, ask him as far as he's up. I'm asking, anything else he needs to-
No, just whether the two projects still remain as one?
Okay.
Or if they're separated. Any announcements this evening?
I've got one. Um, October 6th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 at the Hadley Elementary School, we're doing a bottle and can drive to benefit the Hadley preschool. So October 6th, 9:00 to 4:00, bring your bottles and cans.
We did say the Legion Chicken to Go on September 16th. And the Firefighters Chicken Dinner, which will be Friday night.
Friday night.
Friday night.
Not what I had in my calendar.
Friday, the 21st.
The 21st. All right. And we do have condolences for Edward Galonis on the passing of his sister, Beverly Galonis. So the select board sends you our condolences.
Yeah, I wanted to send Shel Horowitz a condolence, too, for his stepfather that passed away tragically in South Hadley last week, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's his wife's, his wife's.
His, yeah, his wife's stepfather.
Oh, it's his stepfather.
It's his stepfather, yeah.
Oh, it is his stepfather, okay.
Yoshi. So our condolences to Shel for his, his loss. And then also just the, there's this news release from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to, um, uh, look into a planning process of the, the, the horse barn at that refuge. And if they're looking for a public comment on it, I was just trying to see-
The barn swallows?
The barn swallows. Um, they're looking for input by Friday, September 14th. You can email northeastplanning@ws.gov if you have any input into the future of that barn there.
So are they thinking about tearing it down or are they just-
I think they're determining what they want to do with that.
They haven't had any real use for it since the horses have come out of there. The birds have, that's for sure.
Everything's all grown.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
No executive session.
No executive session.
So.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.